The time is one o'clock PM. We're going to begin today's regular session. Going to open up a hearing on Blue Marmot Solar Project. Going to go over a few things and then going to hand it over to our legal counsel, Dr. Johnson. So this is a consolidated application of the file. It's a consolidated application of file number 21-052CP and 21-52CP. We have convened this hearing to provide all sides with an opportunity to go on record, whether oral or in writing. The record remains to be opened and everything submitted so far is and will remain part of the record. The board of commissioners have not yet made and will not be making decisions today. We want to remove any sense of urgency or haste on this matter from the public and from ourselves as commissioners to allow appropriate time and consideration. Our primary goal is to create the full record on which to evaluate and make our decisions. To that end, we currently plan to have a total of three public meetings on this matter, the first of which being today. We may be asking questions for clarification to elaborate throughout the meeting, but the board does not intend to make comments or enter into discussion with any party. The board will hold a second public hearing on this same issue in two weeks' time to allow all parties ample time to respond to comments made today or to supplement the written record. While the board intends to allow all parties time to present their positions, parties are however asked to be succinct. The county has all submitted written materials, emails, and letters, and the record will remain open until it closes at a later date. That will likely be at the close of the second hearing. The board will review everything. The best use of any speaker's time is to address anything not in the material submitted rather than repeat what is in the written record. We hope to allow as much time as is needed to cover everything and be thorough. Some parties have contacted members of the board either in person or by telephone. While the commissioners have endeavored to be accessible and polite in those moments, ex parte contact of any substance has been avoided. And these subjects, public hearings, are intended to make sure that all parties are given a full and fair opportunity to be heard. We ask each member of the public to limit themselves to about five minutes of comment. If there is time after everyone has had a chance to speak, we may allow for additional comments and rebuttal. Again, we want to be thorough and allow for as much time as is necessary. I will however be calling recessed periodic breaks in the meeting to accommodate everyone here so that nobody has to miss anything. We would like to adjourn today's meeting by five to allow people to be home with their families at a fifth hour, but we're here for as long as is needed. Our county council will now provide an explanation on the process. Mr. Jim Bailey, followed by Darwin, give any description of the issues and background. Then the formal parties will be allowed to comment and then we will then open it up for public comment. Jim?
Can you hear me?
That's a little muffled.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's a little muffled, but we can hear you.
Okay. Not sure what to hear about that, but if you feel like if I drop out, let me know.
Okay.
So very generally, the entire process here, this is an application made for a digital use permit and a variance or change in the comprehensive plan. We'll get into detail about all that. But in that kind of application process, it's reviewed by the planning department. Then it goes to the planning commission in which all interested parties have an opportunity to present their sides and their support or opposition to the requested application. And after it's been done, the planning commission has made its recommendation to approve the application. One of those, the all interested parties who participated in the hearing process before the planning commission has the opportunity to make an appeal or file an appeal. This is why we just did that. Bottom, we provide details on that. My role going forward is to make sure that the process runs smoothly and to step in or for lack of a better word, make an objection to the parties that are moved off of the topic where it comes to. So I thought, you know, I'd like to plug into this.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you all for being in attendance. I'm Darrell Johnson, planning director for the county. What I'm going to do is just give you a quick summary of where we're at and how we got here. So the applicant, Blue Marmot, nine LLC submitted application, which is incomplete back in June. And then we held our first hearing before the planning commission on the 17th of August. The planning commission then continued that hearing to the 31st, at which time they gave a recommendation to the board commissioners. The summary is as follows. This is a public hearing concerning an application by Blue Marmot, nine LLC to establish a global take solar project utility facility which requires a goal three exception, a comprehensive plan change, including transmission line to lost being requested substation. The planning commission had reviewed all the project components of the two applications submitted and gave a recommendation to the board commissioners. At a later date, and if approved by the board commissioners, the exception would allow a global take solar project to be established on a parcel greater than 320 acres, but less than 1920 acres of non-erable land, approximately 575 acres. This is a commercial utility facility and other uses like this are for the purpose of generating power for sale are allowed as conditional uses on the Lake County Zonex articles 3 and 24. Also, Board of the Vice Statutes RS 215, 283, the sub two use and/or Oregon Administrative Rule, OR 660, Division 33, 01, 30, Criteria 5 and 38. And the decision will be based on the application, meaning the applicable criteria. The proposed solar site would be on township 38 South, range 20 East, on tax lots 4100 and 4102 in an A2 agricultural use zone. Also, including the substation beyond 39 South, range 20 East, section 21, quarter section AA. Also, on tax lots 1500 and 1200. And that's in an A1 exclusive farm use zone. The public notice of... The notice of public hearing was mailed to all adjacent property owners first at the planning commission level and then after the recommendation was given, it was then re-mailed out for this hearing today. No follow-up notice will be mailed. Keep that in mind. This is your one notice of the hearing. Again, Commissioner Williams, Chair Williams described that we will hold the meeting in two weeks' time. Just wanted to be specific, we need to decide on exactly the timing that later. But just as in closing here, notice was also provided to all adjacent owners to affected agencies, state, local, and federal, as well as the military. And a 35-day notice was provided to DLCD, which is Department of Land Conservation and Development. As stated before, the application materials and everything in the record, the application is on the website. We haven't put all the materials on the website, all correspondence in there, but we might still want to do that at a later date, which we can discuss. And everything is available for view in the courthouse between hours, normal business hours of 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. The recommendation, as given by the planning commission, goes into detail over all the criteria that was addressed by the applicant in their application as required by the rules previously stated. I can go over those if you wish, but I believe that the PowerPoint would be part of that from the applicant, so we can save time in going over each of them now. But if someone has a question about a specific criteria I brought in the recommendation. On that, I'm here to provide the board with a clarification on rules and procedures or general land use planning questions. So I'm certainly not the decision maker. Other than that, that's, I guess, the presentation I've got for you now. If you have any questions.
With that, we will open up the applicant.
Yeah.
Yes?
This is Mark. I think we need to make something clear. It's been brought up a couple times. When we were talking about the decision of the commissioners, we're not deciding on if we want the project or not. We're deciding whether the planning commission met the correct rule. Correct, Jim?
Yeah, let me just give you a little more up on that. So normally, a conditional use permit is approved by the planning commission first. And if appealed, then the board would see a conditional use permit. In this case, because a goal three exception is required for approval by the board, it's a comprehensive plan change, the board has to review that application. For history purposes, previously, the board had, in 2010, held these as separate to streamline the process, to consolidate it. We had the planning commission review both and then give you guys a recommendation on both. They could have approved the conditional use permit separately and allowed an appeal process that way. But in this case, it's simpler to just have you guys make one final county local decision, which obviously is applicable to land use court appeal after this. And I will tell you, the planning commission gave a recommendation based on the criteria they felt that it met. There was two planning commissioners that voted against, three that voted for. With the recommendation, there were conditions of approval that were recommended as well. You have that as attachment, we'll even see A in the record. And there were 17 conditions of approval. I know that this list, not all probably asked for a copy of it was available at the hearing, but it is available, certainly if you want to look at it. But if W and applicant spent some time on, considerable time on mitigation plan and come to an agreement on that, that's certainly part of, would be part of the decision that you make to have that plan as part of the decision. And all conditions that were agreed upon by the applicant, I'll give you.
You mean as a condition?
Yeah, as a condition, you can.
Does that help, Commissioner Alveson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it sort of a public what our actual decision was.
Yeah, you can obviously make a decision one way or the other. You don't have to follow a conditional planning commission. We have five entirely different, this is, you know, a hearing, meaning that it's off the... Anything prior and new is, can be included in the record. You know, it might not be the right term, I guess, but it's similar. It's, this is a new process. You're the board commissioners, you're taking that recommendation, all previous materials submitted to make your decision.
All right. Turn over to you guys if the presentation is ready.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for joining today. For everyone that was at the first planning commission hearing, some of this will be a repeat, but I think it's worth repeating. I, yeah, appreciate everyone's time. My name is Logan Day. We'll do brief introductions in a second. In terms of an overview for what all our team will cover today, we'll do brief introductions. I'll give an overview of what about EDP Renewables, our company. And then we'll also give kind of an overview of the project as a whole. And then we will have, we'll dive into energy compliance and goal three exception as well. Again, my name is Logan Day, project manager for EDP Renewables on the Blue Marmot project. We've got Paul Salo on the phone. He is our senior project manager for pickups and in hearings. He's our primary consultant from a permitting perspective on this. And I'll let him introduce himself.
Tiffy Man, attorney of stories, law firm. And I specialize in energy facility permitting. I'm a land use environmental lawyer. With me is my colleague Max Yopik, who is similarly a land use guy. So happy to be here, appreciate your listeners today.
So a brief overview of EDP Renewables. EDPR, we are the fourth largest renewable developer in North America by installed capacity. Most of our projects to date have been wind farms. 58 in operations currently. And we are, we have eight solar parks currently generating as well. And we're continuing to develop a lot more projects, which this is one. The energy that we're generating is enough for more than 2 million US homes nationwide. This project, as I'll describe in a second, 50 megawatts would be enough for about 12,000 US homes, Oregon homes. And then we are headquartered in Houston, Texas, and have kind of regional offices all over North America. This, I've already described most of it, but it's just kind of a map showing. Everything in red is where we've got operational projects already. All the gray dots are development projects that we're currently working on. So as an overview to the project itself and what we've proposed in our application, solar project consists of kind of three separate pieces. One of them being the PDE site, what everyone kind of thinks about as a solar project. That's all the panels, the wrapping, everything involved. I'll go over that in a second. As I mentioned before, it would be a 50-megawatt project. Enough for about 12,000 homes. Projected lifespan, 35 years, that is the lifespan of the solar panels. So that's where we come up with that 35-year lifespan. And it would sit on about 575 acres. Zone, currently zoned A1 and A2, we'll discuss one later. To connect the project to the grid, we would be running a, what's called a medium voltage collection line, 34.5 kilovolts, mostly through public right-of-way with some private easements involved. All of it would be buried underground in a trench or border. And then finally, we would connect that medium voltage line to a project substation, step it up to the voltage required by the grid, and then interconnect at the Bullard substation, which is located at Stock Drive. So this is a map, kind of an overview of the project itself. As you can see, up at the top is the Duburu solar site. That's where all the panels would go. Everything in yellow, kind of in the middle there, that's where the main people's line would run. And then down to the very bottom there is where the substation would be. The solar site, as mentioned, would be on Duburu land. It's currently owned by Duburu LLC. The land totals about 1,394 acres. And it includes two parcels. The panels themselves would spread across those two parcels. Like I said, on about 575 of those, also 1,400 acres. And then the remainder, at least on the east side, would be used for habitat mitigation area. Most of the habitat mitigation area is located on that Duburu site. There's one additional private landowner that has agreed to enter into an option with us as well, but because that is not finalized, we don't have any part of the record yet. That's just a brief overview of what all really goes into. Solar site, you've got panels which sit atop the racking. The wrapping kind of parts the panels track. The sun throughout the day, after no sunlight. You've got low voltage scheduling, connecting all of the panels to our power conversion stations, which step the power up to that medium voltage that I talked about earlier, which then runs down to our substations. And then also with our site, we've got perimeter roads, which are primarily for fire purposes, which I'll talk about a bit, and then service roads internally as well. And then we've got a perimeter fence for security purposes for the site. This is just kind of an overview of what that looks like. At least some of our recent engineering and where those panels would go. Everything is blue with its panels. Pink is interior service roads. The red kind of around outside, those are the perimeter roads. Those white dots are the 15-hour conversion stations. And then that black dotted line is our platform. As mentioned before, we run about 6.2 miles of medium voltage line from the Duburu site down to the project substation. About five and a half miles of that is on public rights of way. About three quarters of a mile across private easements. Most of it is within, at least everything that's public right-of-way, most of it's within Lake County jurisdiction. About a mile of it is within Towne Lake Use jurisdiction. So we are working with them as well. This is just an overview of that core work. You can see kind of that grayed-out area, that's Towne Lake Use jurisdiction. And so that's where we will see interaction with that for their necessary permitting as well. As mentioned before, the project substation would be located down off of Stock Drive lane, near where it meets with P Street. The 34.5 line would run down to the project sub, be stepped up, then interconnected to the Bullard substation. And then from the project substation, after that power was stepped up, there'd be about an 800-foot overhead line connecting our project's power to the grid at that Bullard substation down there off Stock Drive. It is the same point of interconnection as is currently used for Blackcap and Airport Solar that are down there next to the airport. This is the map of where that would go. That kind of lime green rectangle on the left-hand side is where the actual substation would go. And then that green hash area would just be where our transmission line would pass overhead. And then it would head straight south into the Bullard substation. So that's an overview of all the project components. We have definitely pretty seriously considered fire with this project. We know that's a priority and concern down here. We've designed the entire project to the necessary electrical standards. There will, we'll have operations staff throughout the lifetime of the project that will maintain the project to spec and to those electrical standards. There will be preventative measures taken during the course of construction in terms of providing the necessary gear and planning with our EPC contractor to make sure that fire risk is minimized and mitigated as much as possible. And then there will also be planning with the local fire departments as well in terms of action plans should something arrive. So we'll be partnering very closely with them on that. And then the perimeter roads, as I mentioned, are, were a request of the local fire departments when we spoke with them several months ago. And so we made sure to design those in for that engineering. They asked for 30-foot wide roads with turnout to every 800 feet to accommodate 300-foot poses. And so we made sure to design that in all by the specs of the 2020 Oregon Fire Code. It would not have been a code put out in 2020, which is why we're by 2020. Why this project in this location? We've got that question a lot, so I figured I'd just speak to it upfront. So this project initiated back in 2016. Prior to that, back in 2007, Oregon set out some statewide initiatives for bringing 50% of electrical load up to renewable standards by 2040. Because of that requirement from the state, utilities started putting out renewable energy requests for proposal and basically asking independent power fixtures such as EDP Renewables to build projects that ultimately reach that goal. And so because of that and because EDPR, as its business model, fits into these kinds of RFPs that are put out by utilities, in 2016, we sought a site in Oregon that would service Northwest utilities in their goals of bringing renewable energy online. And we, you know, did some initial outreach to landowners and decided that a project could be feasible in Lake County. We came up with a project plan and a project layout, which we then bid in to a PDE request for some smaller projects and we were awarded for that request. And so we were chosen, our five different sites. So PDE accepted our proposals for five different 10-megawatt sites. As you all are probably aware, three of those sites were on irrigated ag land. It became very clear, very fast, that it was a mistake to have cited those projects on irrigated ag land. And we almost immediately started trying to reach out to the PDE to allow ourselves to consolidate to a single site and move on to irrigated ag. For a couple of years, all of our requests from PDE or to PDE were denied. We had contractual obligations to continue pursuing the project on five sites. But then earlier this year, in the spring of 2021, we asked PDE again to be able to consolidate to a single site, which would allow us again to move up irrigated ag and also move out in the HSE process, which we were required to be in by the previous layout. And PDE finally solvents it, allowed us to move to a single site, which is how we planned it on the Duburu site, actually in the north side of Lakeview. So the Duburu property was, has always been part of the project. Originally, it was only going to host 10 megawatts. We wanted a site that could potentially host 50 megawatts if we were able to consolidate. It was always a goal to be able to do that, but we weren't sure if we would be able to. With that in mind, we performed pre-construction surveys on the western half of the property. We did not perform it on the entire property. But the western half was deemed enough for 50 megawatts and was more constructible than the eastern side. The eastern side has a number of wetlands, kind of undulating terrain. It was deemed less favorable to developing solar, which is why you see the project cited on the western side of the Duburu parcels. And, yeah, to that last point, just, we had always planned on doing the Duburu property if capable and if we were allowed to consolidate to this single site. And as part of that selection process, there's a number of criteria, citing criteria that we use to select potential sites. The most important one is that it's within a very, roughly a 10-mile radius of where we can interconnect. Through interconnection studies with Pacificor and other studies of our own, we deemed, and we were granted space on the Bullard substation. And so we wanted a site within 10 miles of that Bullard substation. That was the primary driver, so we set a radius around that and we ran a number of additional criteria. So there was a maximum distance. There was trying to stay within the groups like basin, because the basin itself is fairly flat, which is more favorable to solar. which is more favorable to solar building on a mountainside, it's not. So we wanted to stay in the basin, we wanted to avoid public lands. Building on public lands introduces EVA permitting, which you can take years and years to get through. So we wanted to avoid that. Again, avoidance of steep slopes. And then also with this being our option for a 50-megawatt site, we wanted a big piece of property that was roughly 1,000 acres. Because that, we knew would give us the space we needed to build a 50-megawatt site. And then the final criteria is, was avoiding, when possible, avoiding anything with water rates. And so you'll see on the next map, the first five of those criteria kind of overlaid. And so it shows there's very few options in terms of within a 10-mile radius, you know, 1,000 acres, not a lot of slope inside the basin. So it gives us roughly five or six options. But then if you overlay water rates, it makes it pretty clear that the Duburu site is the only option of those five sites that was the best fit for what we were looking for. So that is how we landed at that Duburu site. Moving on to kind of the, the impacts of the project and benefits as well. During construction of the project, that's made it to create about 140 construction jobs. The, and then we've run what's called an in-plan model, kind of a generally accepted projection model for economic benefits from these types of projects. And it predicts that to accommodate those 140 construction jobs, there will also be an additional 140 jobs supported in the community during the course of construction. The majority of the construction jobs, we have projected to be able to source from local labor. Our plan is to source from local labor as much as is possible. And then during construction, it'll generate about 26 million new spending on labor and materials in the county. And then there'll be an additional 1.9 million, an additional spending related to accommodations and stuff like that. And then during operations, there will be two full-time jobs created for the project. That is projected to support an additional 1.5 jobs in the community from having those two new jobs created, again, in-plan model. But then the real benefit comes from the physical impacts throughout the life of the project. It is currently projected that the pilot tax program to the first 20 years would generate $350,000 a year in revenue for the county. And then it would go up past that 20-year mark, which creates an average of approximately $433,000 a year in taxes for the county across the life of the project. That results in a cumulative roughly 15 million increase for the tax base throughout the life of the project. And then this is roughly a 3% boost in the county's tax base, at least the way we've calculated it.
Logan, are you guys looking at a pilot or a study?
Right now, we're looking at a pilot. And this is just a table kind of outlining that, that tax breakdown. Now, as we're, at least according to the most recent tax breakdown, we were given from the assessor like where the roughly, where the funds roughly would go. So schools, libraries, some very fire protection facilities, things like that. Another concern from these projects is where solar panels are designed to absorb as much sunlight as possible, so they don't generate some glare that there is and every day some incidental glare from them. We had a third-party glare study run for this project, which resulted in zero impact for any like airlines or local airports for residences. I've got that all outlined in the next one. So airports, residences, and roads all had multiple heights analyzed and none of them resulted in any harmful glare at any point throughout the project. So this is, is an analysis that runs every day of the year, every minute of the day. And it sees if there would be any glare created during basically any minute of the year. And it came up with zero minutes throughout the year. And that, the full study is included as an application. From a habitat mitigation standpoint, we worked for several months with OFMW to come up with a habitat mitigation plan for the project. The HMP would avoid and minimize impact as much as is possible. What can't be avoided would be mitigated and offset to the extent that we could. We have agreed to set aside a little over 1,000 acres of mitigation land, which resulted in about a, for every one acre of impact, which is basically fence acreage, for every fence acre, there would be 1.8 acres set aside as habitat mitigation plan. Within that area, we would be taking several measures to improve the habitat for the affected wildlife, including planting the shrubs that the wildlife likes to eat. Minimizing noxious weeds, eliminating noxious weeds, improving wetland areas, and also taking fire preventative measures. And this is just kind of an overview of parts of that land. Like I said, we've got a little additional land in the works, you've signed, but I'm not including it at this point.
So point of clarification. 1,000 acres, you say, over 1,000 acres of mitigation on the southern side?
So.
I have on my notes 775.
So 775 is what we have marketed, because that's what's remained. That is what remains on the east side of the Duburu land. But like I said, we've got additional land that we've agreed to in terms of that property yet, for an option. So we would purchase additional land that would be included to get us to that 1.8 acre threshold. So I think I did the math this morning and it's something like 1.8 to 575 acres of effective land is something like 1,038 acres. And so we would make sure we would have at the very least that much land and so we didn't have a fat mitigation area.
Just a quick question, as I saw it got brought up quite a few times in discussions. Why is it 1.8 acres instead of 2 acres?
That's what we agreed to with OFMW through a number of discussions. We, during negotiations, it was, it was discussed what ratio to be. And given the measure of fleet that is taken to improve that area, 1.8 seemed like a good ratio. And then I think it's my last potentially. So in terms of restoration and financial assurance, there's obviously code of requiring that we put a decommissioning bond in place for this project and ensure that the site can be restored at the end of its life. As part of that, we have to minimize any hazardous materials on the project and certainly any left on the site. Perform weight control, minimizing the amount of waste. And then also restoring the disturbed area back to its original state, if that's as it is possible. One more. In terms of our, our decommissioning plan, we have estimated those costs at roughly 2.6 million. If you eliminate scrap value, it brings us down to about 1.2 million. We have received, you know, confirmation from March Wortham, that is a group that has insured our projects before, that they could cover more, far more than what we, we would need for this project. The newest update on this is we've heard a lot of feedback from the community that as we previously proposed it, to have a decommissioning bond in place two years before the expiration of the project. Folks weren't, weren't, you know, exactly thrilled about that. They didn't want to see us, you know, putting that in place a year 33. They wanted it in place year one to avoid something happening, kind of like what's, what's happened down at Red Rock, where it's just kind of sitting there. We are very certain that we will be able to build this project and maintain it for the 35 years. But to put folks' minds at ease, we've committed in the last day to have a decommissioning bond in place upon commencement of construction, so that there's no fear of, of having a project just sitting there. It's something where to happen to EDP Renewables. And then, yeah, last piece, let's just, project schedule. We submitted our application back during, we're hoping that the House will have hearings. We are targeting construction in, in spring of next year. And then we're targeting operations at the end of next year. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Salo, who is joining us by his.
Thank you, Logan. Everybody, hearing me, give me a thumbs up here. All right. I promise I'll just show my face and introduce myself and then I'll spare you. Can you go to the next slide, please? Slide 40.
I didn't just do the slide.
Just do the slide, can you?
If you put it on speaker, you'll just show.
Which button is that? Move the pen and just, just press speaker.
Hang on.
Top right corner.
Is that a view on the top?
Top right. It says speaker.
So is this, is this a speaker maybe?
Oh, he'll still show up when I do this. Let's not worry about it, let's keep going.
Okay, so.
Finally, you see Paul's face. Go ahead, Paul.
Round page 40.
All right, so slide 40. So good afternoon, everybody. I'm Paul Salo, I'm the Senior Project Manager and Managing Planner with Jacobs Engineering. So it's my team that assisted the applicant in preparation, most of the application before today. I'll be describing project compliance with some of the relevant working criteria. And I emphasize some because it's no doubt seen, there's a lot of criteria involved. So I'm going to focus on what the applicant feels are some of the more important criteria. But obviously, we're prepared to discuss any of it, should you guys have questions. So before I start, I'd also like to give a couple of thank yous. First of all, the commissioners, thanks very much for your time and your consideration. I'd also again like to specifically thank Darwin. He's been patient with that, with us throughout this entire process. He's helped us understand what we're doing in the process. So needless to say, the applicant agrees with the planning conditions conclusion that the application meets review criteria and you can refer with your recommendation for approval. So what's in the application? Well, as shown on this slide, there are two separate requests. One is for a conditionally used permit for constructing and operating projects. The second is for a goal for exception for portioning for the project in the county agricultural zones. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, there are a variety of criteria that apply. First of all, for the conditionally used permit, there are criteria from various articles and sections of your own ordinance, and also provisions from the comprehensive plan. These are all addressed in the application and were considered by the planning of the planning condition. Next slide, please. Still on the conditionally used permit, there are also critical provisions in state law, both in Oregon revised statute and Oregon administrative rule. Again, these are all addressed in the application to complete the plan. Finally, there are specific requirements in Oregon administrative rule for the goal for exception. And my colleague, Steve Mann, will discuss compliance with the goal three related provisions later in the presentation. Next slide. Okay, so now we get into a discussion of project compliance with some specific review criteria. This first criterion has to be the scene quality and from section 24.18 of your own ordinance. This is the conditionally used criterion for renewable energy facilities. I put each specific part of the criterion into the separate board on the provided light spectrum to find what each covered. First of all, the Lumarna project has been designed and will be operated as compatible as practical with surrounding scene resources. That's the first part of the criterion in board one on the slide. The applicant understands that the county does not have EDP authorities or specifically designated glorified scene resources identified in the comprehensive plan. So as far as county designated, these resources still, there are none in the vicinity of the project. The two designated scene resources the applicant located in the general project area are the Oregon Outback scene byways and Oregon Outback scene bike rated, which are both along the segments of US Highway 395 where the scene is proposed to work. These byways are designated as scenic byway Oregon, scenic byways program. Oregon legislature designed, designed scenic byways for a variety of purposes, which include providing funding and planning for the Oregon Department of Transportation. Oregon's scenic byway program crosses the jurisdictional boundaries and establishes new and criteria that includes consistent signage and statewide promotion. The applicable legislation does not, however, establish the authority on intent to regulate or limit land use of approximately the scenic byways. And even if it did, the Lumarna project has set back a minimum of over 2,000 feet from the scenic byway section from this highway. In most cases, it's closer to 3,000. Set back. Also in terms of compatibility with the surroundings, I want to quickly remove some of the dimensions of the project components. Because the solar array portion of the project not including color can approximately 10 feet in height. The tallest component on the solar array site is the scene perimeter transformer box. These are also referred to in the application of power conversion stations. These will have a height of approximately 10 feet above ground and resemble high-tech carbill or conic boxes. In terms of the solar panels, at the maximum height when fully tilted or rotated towards the sun, the top edge of the solar panel will be approximately 8 feet above ground. And then finally, the various electrical collector lines needed for the project will be placed underground absolutely whenever and wherever possible, including where the collector line is used to store the array site and all within public rights of way. So there'll be no above-ground power pole on the solar array site. In the current plan, there are no poles to be used within public rights of way. That cannot cause any sort of operation maintenance building on the solar array site, so no building should be present. Logan described a glare and glint study that was completed for the project. I just wanted to reiterate, 2025, that the entire point of this technology is to absorb as much sunlight as is possible and minimize reflectivity. To address the second and third parts of the criterion, which are the second and third board on slide, if Oregon's stuff, the applicant has a restoration and financial assurance plan. And part of that plan immediately can be vegetated in the area preserved during construction. And all construction-related equipment and structure is buried and completely permitted to fall into construction. And then finally, to address the last part of the provision on the fourth bullet on the slide, the solar arrays will employ anti-reflective coating in nine significant reflectivity. And again, there are no buildings proposed on the solar array. Next slide, please. So this way you're seeing criterion, criteria three and four, also from section of 24.18. also from section of twenty-four, point eighteen, covering efficient wildlife resources and historic and cultural resources. In essence, these criteria both indicate that in assessment of the resources need to be completed, the potential impact should be avoided, minimized, or mitigated. First of all, it affects efficient wildlife resources. Application survey, the entire project area is using a survey methodology to create for the Oregon Department of Efficient Wildlife. No federally or state lists of threatened, endangered, or biodiversity sensitive species were identified within the project area. The applicant consulted with OSW and as Logan mentioned, has the agency's approval or had a satisfaction with them. And literally, those affect its smart and cultural resources. The applicant has conducted a field survey within the entire project area. In this case, in coordination with the Oregon State Forest Preservation Office and the Land Tribes. The survey culminated in a cultural resources survey report that's been submitted to both Oregon Shippensburg and the relevant tribes. Oregon Shippensburg has issued a letter approving of the cultural survey findings and recommendations. And finally, an inadvertent discovery plan can prepare to handle any unanticipated cultural resources if they haven't been found during construction. Next slide, please. These are the last two criteria from section twenty-four, point eighteen that cover. First of all, sub five for fire protection. Logan discussed this, so I promise I'll be brief. The project components will, as Logan listed, all meet national electric code and engineering standards. Prender roads have been included around the solar array portion of the project, designed consistently for fire codes, and are meant to provide emergency vehicle access and also active fire break. And finally, the applicant fully committed to coordination and communication with all principal fire districts and support development for project-specific emergency response plans. Next, under sub thirteen and noise. For solar projects, by far the greatest level of noise is generated during short-term temporary construction phase. However, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality specifically events, construction activity becomes compliant with noise rules. During operation, these facilities are inherently quiet and only minimal maintenance activity when equipped is on an ongoing basis. These projects are especially quiet at night, obviously with no solar resource in present. Next slide, please. Next, we get into conditional use criteria in section twenty-four, point nineteen for non-farm uses required in agricultural zones. The first criterion, A, which assesses whether the solar project is compatible with farm uses as defined in Oregon Revised Statutes and if the project is consistent with the state agricultural program policies. First, solar generation projects are permitted to be used on agriculturally zoned land, both by the way of county zoning ordinance, but also by statements law. Secondly, at the end of the project's life, it must admit its condition with fire protection condition. This is a very clean technology without air or water emissions. The technology requires very minimal maintenance and activity in operation. There is no disruption to the surrounding environment. Finally, the proposed project will not interfere specifically with farm uses on adjacent land, which would be poor and bad one and still in the fly. Next slide, please. This is criterion D under section twenty-four, point nineteen. This criterion assesses that the project will interfere seriously with accepted farm activities on adjacent lands that are of the farm use. First, it's important to point out that this criterion is a measure or level for property. Measure if not interfere at all or interfere a little, the criterion is interfere seriously or significantly. Next, it's important to define determinants in this criterion. First, per Oregon Revised Statutes, farm use is essentially how the land is being used for monetary gain. The revised statutes include various categories of farm uses. In this case, the project's site, the vast majority of adjacent lands are devoted to cattle grazing and ranching as the farm use. This was determined through an assessment of farm and land uses conducted by the applicant through review of aerial photography, interviews with the project's underlying landowner, and a ground reconnaissance of the area from various road rights and land. Next slide, please. So this map shows the results of that farm assessment. The project pringer tanks, hopefully you can see. It is shown in the middle of the map, the black dash line. It's tan color across the majority of the map. This land that the assessment shows is grazed by cattle in some form or fashion. The white blue is area that offers some other specific use, such as the landfill to the north. There's a quarry to the east and a portion of the prison just to the south. The orange properties have an existing residence, which are also within agricultural zoning district. And then near crop circle located about a half mile northwest to get some effect off on the highway. And that's shown on the map. We'll take home the idea that calibrating by far the main farm use on directly adjacent land. Next slide, please. So next, we need to define farm practice. So farm practice is an element of the farm use operation that is needed to make the use financially viable. But either, either different elements or components that are needed to support the farm use. Some probable examples of farm practices associated with grazing cattle are listed on the slide. Easily, sharing cattle with adequate water, maintaining efficient access to market, both with the cattle themselves, but also for increased services in which containing cattle needs help and spend them in the hand. Next slide, please. There aren't any farm practices related to cattle grazing on adjacent land that would be seriously, and again, that's the measure here, interfere with applied structural reflection. Again, solar technology does not result in emissions in adjacent lands. Any increase in traffic will be moved through temporary construction phase of the project. And project security tends to ensure cattle remain on adjacent lands. Next slide, please. The next and final criterion I'm going to review from section twenty-four, point nineteen, which ensures that the project does not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern of the area. Based on the applicant's understanding of how the county has interpreted this previously, this area is defined as a late county. Using the area of the county and the area that are privately owned and used for farms, the five hundred and seventy-five acres of agriculturally zoned land used for the solar project constitute approximately twenty-zero-five percent of privately owned land in the county and twenty-zero-eight percent of private land in farms. If one of the main land uses in the county is directly adjacent to the project in agriculture, the analysis and response to these criteria is of course focused on agriculture. The solar project is centered on the ability of the overall land use pattern that has caused a substantial increase in the cost of agriculture, undermined the local economy, such that agricultural uses are directly or indirectly forced out of business, or so noxious and damaging that prevent agriculture impossible. The applicant positions that the project will result in nothing. Next slide, please. The applicant positions that the project's economic benefits outweigh the small agriculturally zoned land displaced for the thirty-five year life project. Among other economic benefits, the project will create construction jobs in the short run and contribute to the size of the project's impact for the long run. Originally, the applicant proposed the project split over five separate solar array sites spread across the county. But after hearing local feedback, consolidated the project onto the single, devoted solar array site, which did not have water rights or any emissions. Essentially, the applicant further gives key potential instability in the land use pattern. Again, the project will result in zero admissions into the adjacent area and not seriously increase the cost of the agriculture income. Next slide, please. Now we find that some of the new worst state-level solar site requirements enacted with the passage of House Bill twenty-three, twenty-nine, back in January of twenty-twenty. These requirements are prescribed in Oregon Revised Statutes two fifty-four, forty-six. Again, these requirements are all addressed in the application as written by the planning conditions. The first set of requirements mandate consultation with OSW regarding wildlife habitat impacts and mitigation as been previously indicated, the applicant has been subject to a great staff's evaluation plan. The second set of requirements on the slide address historic, cultural, and archaeological resources. Again, the applicant has conducted a complete cultural resources survey and has Shippensburg approval of that survey results and conclusion. Next slide, please. The next set of requirements under ORIS two fifty-four, forty-six have to do with the project's retirement and site restoration. Logan talks about the project's restoration and financial assuring plan, which describes how the project will be retired, site restored, includes decommissioned costs estimate, and provides a letter of assurance demonstrating that applicants' financials are involved. Therefore satisfying for the requirement. And that's the conclusion of my slide. The next portion of the presentation is focused on the Goal Three exceptional request and my colleagues, you know, and stuff like that. Again, I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just checking to see if there are any questions, Mr. Salo, moving along. No. Moment, yeah. See how we do here. And thank you for this opportunity to present to you today. As I indicated, I'm legal counsel to EDPR on this project. And I have a big portion of explaining my compliance with the Goal Three Exception. One thing I want to note is the code requirements and statutory requirements that Mr. Salo talked about have a whole lot of, there's just a lot of overlap and inter, kind of interconnection between those criteria, the Goal Three Exceptions, and other aspects of the application. I will try to minimize the redundancy and see what I can do to move along here so we can get to the public testimony relatively quickly. Just globally, statewide Goal Three was adopted as a basis to regulate agricultural lands. Other specific listed uses include energy generation allowed by conditional use permit, as you know. Generally speaking, state policy and local codes acknowledge that certain issues, certain uses cannot be accommodated in urban areas. Hence, the conditional use process and the Goal Three Exception process regulate those lands in rural areas. Goal Three Exceptions are only allowed where a use is allowed, either as a permitted use or a condition. So if we could come in here with a wholly prohibited use, that's even Goal Three Exception, that doesn't apply. So because it is a conditionally allowed use, this is an eligible pathway for us. We're aware that this county has a decent amount of experience and understanding Goal Three Exceptions. So again, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this because I don't even have some experience with this area. We are needing a Goal Three Exception as both Logan and Paul indicated because the project does exceed three hundred and twenty acres for non-arable lands that require, again, does require Goal Three Exception. One thing I want to emphasize here that I think is really important is we could come in with a series of three hundred and twenty acre projects that avoid the Goal Three. And instead, this is a project, it's a holistic project, it's a single project. And so we have decided, rather than taking that incremental development approach of multiple smaller sites, the applicant is proposing a five hundred and seventy-five acre site that is sufficient for the size and to meet utility needs to meet PG's objectives that Mr. Logan talked about. We could kind of not cause ourselves all this pain, but we thought it was appropriate to come in with, you know, with honest and accurate project that does reflect those requirements. One thing I do want to pause and say here is, as you know, EDPR's been at this for a long time. We worked, we started with an EFSEC process. We were working on an EFSEC Energy Facility Siding Council, you know, that, application. We pulled back and cited a permit locally because we had a lot of confidence in the local process. We heard from the community that that by-site proposal was not acceptable. And so to EDPR's credit, we pivoted and try, have attempted to push the project along a bit better and more wholly satisfies what we heard from the county. One thing that we were able to get through that EFSEC process we started was a lot of materials of an EFSEC call and content that wouldn't be filed with EFSEC. So this notebook, the thickness of this notebook and its comprehensive nature is both, I mean, it's a good resource to you, but it also frankly, we were allowed to roll in a lot of information from the EFSEC process, including the site restoration and the security information that Logan indicated. And we are now set at an EFSEC standard for decommissioned project, which we hadn't been before yesterday. So I just emphasize that we are kind of trailing where we would be if this were an EFSEC process. The reason, one reason that I think that's important, and I'm fairly sure this county had some involvement in the House Bill twenty-three, twenty-nine drama from a couple of years ago. That legislation recognized that acreage is over three hundred and twenty acres for non-arable lands would be part of the process for utility scale solar facilities. And it enabled local governments to permit those so-called medium-sized facilities under local codes. So this acknowledgement was really to favor more expedited and efficient permitting, acknowledging the capability of local governments to do that, addressing Oregon's climate goals, and hopefully creating a better pathway that the county have more control over its own local permitting. And many of us were involved in that process and we're kind of happy we were able to hammer that out. So moving along here, slide fifty-seven is just a quick summary of the Goal Three Exception process. The key, really the key elements of this are the alternatives analysis, the so-called EC analysis, which stands for environmental, economic, social, and energy consequences, require a holistic and separate evaluation. And then a very, another fresh, careful look at adjacent farm uses to determine whether or not there could be any interference with the farming activities. So the exception process, I'm just going to skip Darwin to fifty-nine. Slide fifty-nine, can you speak things along with it? This project, as Logan indicated, this is the, really the kind of whole of the stuff here. Does the county's economy, I'm not going to repeat the numbers here. Part of the Goal Three Exception process is to document the economic value to the community of the project. So that's slide fifty-nine. Slide sixteen, Darwin. So I think this is really a key, a key to the Goal Three Exception. The applicant conducted, as you've heard several times, a rather in-depth alternatives analysis. That alternatives analysis is in attachment or appendix J of that notebook. And in fact, the alternatives analysis I'm talking about is well documented in chapter five, point four of the application materials itself. So it'll help me not have to go through this in capable detail just for you to know that that's where you can find this information in considerable detail. So every project obviously needs to meet defined objectives. We have analyzed those objectives in the alternatives analysis. They consider a host of environmental and commercial factors. EDPR, as Logan indicated, has evaluated multiple Lake County locations for the Goal Three Exception process. And the following really are essential and conform that the Duburu's site location is a very well, very good location that meets actually the kind of criteria and the analysis framework that we defined for the project. Sufficient land area, over a thousand acres, flat ground required for solar arrays, predominantly non-arable lands avoiding compromising irrigated or high-value farmlands, no current cultivation, no known history that we're aware of of the landlords were of cultivation, no history of irrigation, no current water rights, relatively minor, John here might somewhat take objection to this, but relatively minor habitat, it doesn't even reach. doesn't even reach... Relatively minor habitat impacts, the ability to mitigate for habitat loss in proximity and in kind on known and identified sites. We have, and I want to just emphasize this, we spent considerable amount of time with Oregon Farm and Fish and Wildlife Service in hammering out the terms of mitigation plan that is acceptable to ODFW, and we provided this to Darwin prior to the conditional use permit process. We're... It's not every day that we can do that in advance of coming and seeking permits, so we were very happy to be able to do that for this project. Access to existing roads, avoiding new road construction, access to regional electrical utilities, substation, ability to install 6.3 miles of collector lines underground in private right-of-way, mostly eliminating impacts of additional transmission lines. That is not something that happens with most projects to underground that amount of electrical infrastructure to avoid impacting other lands surrounding that or to kind of have more transmission lines running up and down all the growths. This is a very deliberate strategy to minimize those impacts. Again, proximity to a regional substation to move power to the utility grid, avoids lands near the Tewas Lake Basin, ability to avoid public lands with natural resource values and issues on top of the MIPA considerations that Logan talked about. So the Exhibit J describes and analyzes other potential sites. The Duburu site is literally the only site within 10 miles of the regional utility substation that meets all these needs and can satisfy these criteria, especially non-arable lands, no compromise of irrigation rights, minimal and mitigated habitat impacts, and which can be and in fact will be mitigated pursuant to the ODFW-approved habitat mitigation plan. Darwin, you want to take me to 61? And so the... One of the E's in the EC analysis is environmental. Again, because we started in an EFSEC process, we developed a considerable amount of information data that Emory would analyze these, the impacts that you see here. They're in the materials, I want to ask them to put your time on them. Economic, social, and energy, you've heard of a number of that. I, Slide 62, I think we'll pass that as well. So finally, finally, just a finally, the key, really the key bottom line question that this application does reflect and kind of echoes the conditional use criteria of compatibility with adjacent counties' agricultural lands and agricultural practices. This project is compatible, and what that means is it will not force a significant change in or increase the cost of farming, will not change or cause change to accepted farming practices on surrounding lands that are devoted farmers. There's no admissions, runoff will be controlled, no impact to existing water rights, minimal traffic, farming practices, cattle raising will continue on all surrounding lands. The effects on the lands will... The effects on lands will not diminish the opportunity for neighboring parcels to expand, purchase, or lease vacant land. And at the end of the project's lifetime, this project will be, will be retired with a commitment on day one per shovel on the ground, that that will happen with this project. So that's what I have. Thank you so much for your attention, and we're all, of course, happy to ask any additional questions.
One question on the habitat mitigation plan. Is it in its final?
It is. John? Confirm that with John's attorney, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Will there be a... Will you provide a card? Do you have a card? Want to tell us?
Yes, I've got it. You have the first one. This one's a little bit updated, but I'm getting this.
Yeah, there's a few pages that are off.
Yeah, but this one's the first one.
All right, at this time, we will... Do we need to take a break for anything?
How's everybody doing? Been sitting here an hour and 15.
Not just.
Do you need a five minute, 10 minute?
Okay. Yeah, okay, we'll take a quick break for five minutes. We'll recess, reconvene at 2:20.
Your scratcher, Jen Hall, is about to jam session.
And at this time, we will open it up for public comments. Again, just to reiterate, I like to try and limit time for about five minutes each, just to make sure that everyone has time to speak. And we can always open it back up for additional public comments once we take a go around the room. And remember to please state your name and name for the record.
Darwin, are we off mute?
Nope, we're not, sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
All right, now we're on, so.
Okay, hello, everyone. We were on mute there. I just opened the meeting back up, and we're opening up for public comments at this time.
I've got a comment. My name's Joseph Cozentino. I live at 21214 Rabbit Hill Road. Thank you for your time this afternoon. Just handed out a paper to the commissioners about a couple of items I want to go on, go over on ORS 197732. This is kind of the layman's version of the law. In this, Section 1A is compatible for use, is not an absolute term for this contract. And as far as I know, there is no comprehensive plan for this area, for this land use, for the planning on this land. Also, in Section C, the following standards are met, not could be met or should be met, but are met. In Section D on the second page, the proposed uses are compatible with other adjacent uses or will be so rendered through measures designed to reduce adverse impacts. I don't think they've addressed that yet because I'm going to be greatly impacted by being surrounded by these solar panels. I did a real quick thumbnail sketch of how much sunlight we're actually getting today on the ground per square meter, just a thumbnail. 90,000 lux is what we're getting right now. If their panels produce that glare by 90%, that leaves us with 10,000 lux or 10,000 lumens, which translates, looking into a 5,000-watt light, where there's glare coming off of those panels. And that's if they do a good job and get 90% of the glare down off of those glass panels, which probably won't happen, but pretty, pretty strong. Also, they talked a little bit about fire protection, but they don't really address how they're going to do it. How are they going to do fire protection during the period of construction and afterwards? I talked to Logan Day about actually getting some water hydrers up there, having her thing about it, other than they're not going to go for it. Also, where are we going to get zero power off of this facility here? This is going to be sold to the grid and actually transported out of the area. If I would have known that I was going to get a... Have this happen around my house where I'm actually getting surrounded by a solar field entry side, I would have never asked for a heat CUP on my property to build a house. I always understood that was going to be a residential area completely, would have never going to be turned into a industrial site. Also, as you know, in June, President Biden did one good thing. He banned the import of solar panels from China right now because they're using slave labor to build those panels in the northern region of China. Those right now are not eligible for import. I don't find any other sources besides China that would be able to satisfy their needs for the panels going out on the site. Also, they went into... The area all around us is all cattle and grazing. That might be true, but we're not cattle and grazing. We're actually residents up there. We care about what we look at. I don't care what they look at. We do. And their bond decommission, how come it's not in place right now? I work for ODOT, did contracts for ODOT. They had to have a bond in place before they could even bid or start work on a project. They don't have that in place yet. 35 years from now, will that actually be enough? Will there actually be a place to dispose of these panels? We don't know that for sure. Also, EDPR made a little mistake in California. They've been kind of sneaking around. Nobody told us about this project until maybe two and a half years ago when they were in a fight with PGE. They actually destroyed a house down in California because they wouldn't settle with them. The residents of that house wouldn't settle. Also, in closing, real quick, get out of your hair, I'm ashamed to have to say that Logan Day approached me to get me to basically shut up. He offered me $20,000 to go away. That's not cool. I came here to live and retire. I didn't come here for that. I don't want their money. I want my view, and I want my property untouched so I can sell it a later date for my kids. Appreciate your time. Now, Logan, you should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? And just a reminder, the public comment is for the record to address your comments to the board.
Just a point of clarification. So we're just going to listen to comments. EDPR will not respond to the comments until later time. So how's that going to work?
It's a good point.
We have time for both.
You have time for both later.
Okay, after each comment or at a later point.
Sorry, we were kind of on back and forth about who's turning this thing.
That's okay. I understand.
So...
Just name for the record.
Yep, my name for the record is Amanda O'Brien. So there's a couple of things I want to bring up, some things that were added as a result of what I was listening to here this afternoon. But to start, you know, in all of their grandstanding and publications and promoting of the project, one of the things they really push is the economic benefit to this county. And that's 15, about $15 million over 35 years. So that's roughly $428,500 a year. Little bit more than that, but if it's less than 15 million, it'll be less than that. So we're just doing rough numbers. But what's going to happen after that? What will the land be worth after that? What's going to be the county revenue after that? If they're talking about putting infrastructure down eight feet into the ground, but then after 35 years, only removing three feet of that, you're going to be left with a worthless piece of property that some of you guys will have to put on clothes on because it's not a new work of craft. And, you know, that's just what it is. You know, this county was founded in 1874. The first church in this county was started in New Pine Creek in 1868. We've had people settled here and providing agriculture here since at least the mid-1860s because that's, I know that's when my property was homesteaded. So that's 161 years of agricultural history here, cultural history. We're going to throw that away on this property for 35 measly years? And that's a drop in the bucket, but it will permanently alter that property and take it out of agriculture. And despite what was said by Mr. Salo, the agricultural benefits in this county are not small. They provide huge economic, huge cultural, and huge historical benefits to our county. Those need to be kept, and we need to account for them. You know, they, they did... One thing that I wanted to talk about that I found out recently is that Blue Marmot did a door-to-door campaign to try and garner support. That's great. They're in their right to. I think it would be good for them to go door-to-door to find out what people thought. During that time, they had a form letter that they were asking people to sign. It was a simple form letter. And I believe you could, it was, they were all submitted by Mr. Day. He could answer the question better than I could. But I believe there are about 35 letters that were submitted in support, all by Mr. Day. They were not submitted individually by the people that signed them, but they were submitted by the company that wants this project to go through. But what I... I have a couple of questions about that. You got 35 letters in, 35 people, after going door-to-door, said, yeah, I'll sign it. How many people told them, no, thank you, I'm against this project, or go to hell? I know a couple of people that told them rather aggressively that they better leave their property right now. So, you know, that needs to be thought about, too. Yeah, they got 35 letters of support, but how many people told them to go pound sand? I'm sure that number was much higher than 35. You know, and those form letters, they express the company opinion versus their, the people's actual opinions. I'm not sure how many letters have been submitted since this project was reposed, but I know that all of them were submitted by the actual people themselves. They were their honest opinions, facts that they garnered themselves, that they did the research on, not the company profiting off of them. So, and the people who signed them, how many of them really knew, understood, or cared about what they signed? We know how it works with the public. Some people do their research. That's how it should be, but we also know there are people who just do what they're told. That needs to be kept into account. You know, I do know that one of the signers, I agree with him signing it. He has an economic benefit to this project. That's somebody I could agree. He has, he has an interest in this project going forward. But most of them, the ones who live in the town, they don't really know. You know? So that kind of goes to the next things about the ethics of this company that we're considering getting into bed with and doing business with. They say that they're an ethical and honest company, but the evidence has shown to the contrary. September 25th last year, there were surveyors in the area hired. The company was called SAM. I don't remember what it stands for. They were hired by EDP to survey the areas. They were found trespassing on several private lands, including that of Ms. Linda Conroy, and parking their vehicles on private property without the owner's permission and their equipment. When confronted, the person working there said that they were hired by EDP and had been assured by EDP that they had been granted permission by all landholders. I know this as a fact because I was the one who confronted them. They were parking on five-quarter-feet property, which I was managing at the time. And I contacted the property owner and said, did you have any knowledge of this? Do you want one there? And he said no. So also while surveying, they were surveying on county roads, bypassing county traffic without the knowledge of the county or permits. And at some point while doing that, I'm sure Mr. Williams and I had talked about it at the time, they actually damaged the road at the intersection of Stock Drive and Westside Road. So that's just one thing. But the bigger issue that probably needs to be addressed, which again goes to the ethics of this company that we're considering doing business with. Two weeks ago, without the knowledge... Two weeks ago, without the knowledge or permission of the school superintendent or the school principal or any other administrators or the school board, Blue Marmot was at the high school volleyball game. And they were approaching our children and asking them to sign documents and petitions in support of this project. Now, yes, because it's not a legal letter or a petition to get something, a vote going on or, you know, something like that, it's not illegal to approach a kid and ask them to sign and say, hey, are you interested in this or do you like this idea? But just because it's not illegal, that doesn't make it unethical. It's unethical and it's immoral. And that's who we are looking at working with and partnering with. And I'm just kind of curious, back to the form letters and the door-to-door campaign, how many of those thirty-five letters would they have gotten if they had told people, oh, by the way, we're going to be at the school and talking to your kids? I mean, that probably wouldn't have gone over real well. And I'm sure most of the parents, had they known that that was going on at the school, wouldn't have gone over real well. You know, I want to also...
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Ryan, just real quick, you're about eight minutes.
Oh, okay. Can I be almost done?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to say, I started this because they were trying to build this solar panel across from me on wetlands and irrigated ag land. That's no longer an issue. I gained nothing by opposing this project. I am doing it because it is a bad project for a bad company. They're proposing it because they have a monetary gain. But I am gaining nothing as I oppose this. The county commissioners, you know, I don't want to tell you your job. You guys know it, but, you know, you guys have three things to consider. What is the law? That's a very important part of it. And it's all parts, not just the convenient parts, including the parts of ORS two fifteen that says that you have open land used for ag and you guys have, there's, you guys have to try to preserve it when possible. You also need to think about what's best for our county and its citizens. And that's not always monetary. You also have to think about what your constituency wants. I did a little Facebook poll. I kept it very neutral because I didn't want any bias in it. And my results from it showed pretty much the same as from when I talked to people. About one point five percent of the people in this area are actually in support of it. So, your constituents do not want this project. They're not opposed to solar. They're opposed to bad solar. There's better places for this project. Last part, and I swear to God I'm done. And this is based off of what was said here, that cattle grazing is not affected or harmed on adjacent farmlands. I'll bet Sonya Matthews disagrees with you wholeheartedly on that. When they put in the project down by the airport, they had significant issues with pink eye ever since that first year. They had seventy-seven cows that were either partially or completely blinded permanently as a result of pink eye. They had to send all those cows to market. Plus, while they were treating it, as you all know, if you're cattle men, which you guys are, when your cows are sick, they go off feed. That means it's going to take them longer to gain weight. It's going to take their babies longer to gain weight. That means you're feeding them longer. That costs money. That means you have to medicate them. That costs money. It costs time, which costs money. So, when they state there will not be any increase of cost for raising cattle, they're dead wrong, but I can see where they can think that. They, they've looked at cows. They've never had to work cows that live with them. So, sorry, I know I went over my five minutes quite a lot, but that was just what I wanted to say. I could switch places with you though.
Hello there. My name's Clark Maxwell, it's two three oh, three six, Maxwell Road. Six generations of my family have saddle horses and gathered cows on this property that's right next to this project. And, you know, about fifteen years ago, my dad and I, we started thinking about, or we've always thought about legacy. What are we leaving our kids, our grandkids, you know, the, the community? So, we, we started putting the ranch into a conservation movement, protecting it forever, basically. So then, then, you know, I think about the commissioners, they need to think about legacy also. You know, not only your legacy during your term, but then just what happens from there on out. Thirty-five years is a long time. And anyways, I think we have enough solar in, down here in this part of Lake County to satisfy everyone's needs. I do think that solar, in some aspects, can be a, a very effective way to produce power, but I think when you're affecting property value and the aesthetics of Lake County, then it's not a good resource. In thirty-five years, what will Lake County look like? I, I'm, I'm excited to see what's going to happen to Lake County in thirty-five years because people are going to need room. People are going to need places to grow families and recreate, so on and so forth, and grow food to feed these people. And that's what we do. So, I think you guys need to think long and hard and, you know, fuck up if you don't like it and, and, and do something against it. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. Eric Nerr, and I reside at two one six seven five, Rabbit Hill Road. And I'm going to read a little bit of a letter I submitted for the planning commission, but apparently it was not accepted by the planning commissioner nor the planning director. I wanted to start off with, for the August seventeenth meeting. It says that, and Darwin stated, that a notice was sent out to all adjacent landowners. That is not true. Never received any written notification of the August seventeenth meeting. I found about, babbled through the newspaper, not through the letter nor how I could respond. And I know other landowners did not receive the letter as well. So, that was a requirement that was not met by our own planning commission. At that August seventeenth meeting, we had one planning commissioner that actually was giving advice to Blue Marmot for edits, to make it more palatable for the county commissioners. That planning commissioner actually had said, I would like to work with you guys into the future. I think that introduces a little bit of bias. And then the public was not allowed to attend the subsequent meeting, even though Blue Marmot was, or the approval by the planning commission. And I think that that's supposed to be open to the public unless personnel matters are being performed. Also, when Blue Marmot first proposed this with all five sites, Commissioner Albertson actually proposed a committee to, to review and update the county zoning ordinances in reference to solar energy projects. Don't know what happened to that. I know they, they met once, but I have not seen an updated county zoning ordinance nor have heard of any subsequent meetings to, to do so. I do believe Planning Commissioner Director Darwin Johnston is the chair of that. And would like to know what happened to updating our, our zoning for such projects as, as, as being proposed currently. And then of the proposed five hundred and seventy-five acres on the Duburu site, approximately two hundred and sixty-six acres or forty-six percent of that are actually classified as arable lands and would be prime farmland if irrigated. And that is in their own documentation. The three hundred and eight acres or fifty-four percent of the acres is classified as non-arable. When the statement is made that the site is not non-arable, we are speaking of just over fifty percent, not of the whole five hundred and seventy-five acres. Goose Lake Valley would be losing two hundred and sixty-six acres of arable land and prime farmland if irrigated for thirty-five years and more, if you can't reclaim it. Also, in the proposal, Blue Marmot states that the use of the site does not materially alter the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. Now, it's stated, the area is considered Lake County, not Goose Lake Valley or not the north end of Goose Lake Valley where many of us reside. They state that, that the project causes only a minimal loss of productive resource lands. I argue that the two hundred and sixty-six acres of arable lands is not minimal and the loss of the other three hundred and nine acres, even though non-arable, are negatively affects resources such as scenic vistas, wildlife habitat, and grazing. This site does materially affect the stability of, of the resource and land use patterns within Goose Lake Valley and of Lake County. And particularly, if you look at the cumulative effects of other solar panels already established within Goose Lake Valley. Nobody has talked about the already existing solar panels and how they affect our land use. Now, we want to add five hundred and seventy-five acres more within this valley. So, where is the cumulative effects analysis for that? The Duburu's solar site is a utility scale commercial utility facility for the purpose of generating power as defined by the Lake County zoning ordinance. Under Article twenty-seven, variances, it states, conditions may be attached which are found necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding property or vicinity and to otherwise achieve the purposes of this ordinance and the zone in which the property is located. I would argue the variance be denied in order to protect the best interests of the surrounding property and vicinities. We have only heard about agricultural lands and grazing, but not about the agricultural residents that are also adjacent. And I would say those residents on agricultural lands are negatively affected. And even though we saw a map of, of the actual site of solar panels where they're being proposed to be put, much of the surrounding property is rural residence and not just grazing land. The best interests of the residents are not to be placed at a commercial utility facility adjacent to our properties, which would negatively affect our property values, our scenic vistas, and the ambient noise on our properties and the overall health and well-being of the surrounding neighbors of this proposed commercial utility facility. Also, in Section twenty-seven point oh-two, circumstances for granting a variance states, however, a variance is not to be granted simply because it would afford the owner a higher profit or prevent a mere inconvenience. Yet, when Blue Marmot did the alternative analysis, a reasoning behind a ten-mile radius, and we heard ten-mile radius numerous times of the Bullard Substation, was for a higher profit and convenience of proximity to the substation. There are potentially other alternative sites that are better suited for the commercial utility, but those sites have not been considered because Blue Marmot is looking for a higher profit and convenience. The applicant conducted an alternative analysis that demonstrated that areas that do not require a new exception cannot reasonably accommodate pre-uses in compliance with OAR six six zero four four seven zero zero two zero. If they utilize greater radiance and choose a place, another place to put the substation elsewhere, there are potentially other sites as well that do not require a new exception. Also, in Goal Two, Plan Process, number eighteen states, that private property investments will be protected from incompatible development, which might likely diminish property value and unduly increase taxes. The response from Blue, Blue Marmot is, private property investments within the project area and on lands directly adjacent to the property or the project boundary are primarily for farms consistent with cattle grazing and ranching. As one of the multiple residents and neighbors to the proposed project, I will argue that it is an incompatible development which might likely diminish my and my neighbors' property values. Blue Marmot, Blue Marmot also states that minimal noise will be generated during operation of the facility. So, when there is currently no ambient noise in the area, the noise generated by five hundred and seventy-five acres of solar panels following the sun is not minimal, nor the vibration noise of wind blowing through the solar array. To those that would be adjacent to the commercial utility, that noise will not be minimal.
Briefly, Mr. Nerr, you're around nine, ten minutes now. But just as a question, verification, the letter that you were reading about actually kind of going on, this is the one that you sent on August point third?
That is correct.
Yes, and it was entered into the record.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, a little bit more or?
Yeah, you can, I do can sum it up.
Okay. So, you know, we talked about scenic quality. They even state that in closer views, they are unlikely to be visible. I don't know how many of us have driven by a solar panel close up and did not notice that solar panel. But that is what is stated, stated in their application. And also, by placing the panels furthest to the west side of the project is detrimental and to the residents that live on the west side of the project area, with no consideration to the scenic impacts that brings to the residents of Lake County and those residents on the west side. When I talked to Logan Day about why they didn't put it closer to the east, he said that they just didn't have time for that analysis because they were coming up on the deadline and they needed this and then a proposal. So, instead of looking to see if there was better placement within that thirteen-hundred-acre site, they chose the most convenient site for them. That goes back to further statement. And, you know, I, I go on several more times, but I also wanted my neighbors to hear what I had written. But I will defer for another time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nina Harden and I too live on Rabbit Hill Road. I know that we have submitted a letter to the county commissioners, but I also feel that it's important to be vocal and verbal to be able to reiterate some of my wildlife concerns that I have with the placement of Blue Marmot. I live adjacent to where the proposed site is. I have watched the animals and the animal, but particularly the fawning grounds that are there. To say that there is no impact to the wildlife is incorrect because we could potentially lose that habitat where the spawning area exists. I, I just wanted to talk about, when we talk about the two-to-one rate ratio for the, for the mitigation, that land is already wildlife habitat. So, by reducing and taking out that five hundred and seventy-five acres, I don't see how they are supplanting it by adding additional seven hundred and seventy-five acres that is already wildlife habitat and introducing the proposed purchasing of other lands. That is in fact just what it is, a proposal. It hasn't happened yet, it hasn't been confirmed. And so, therefore, in my mind, it does not meet the two-to-one. It is still, in fact, it's only seven hundred and seventy-eight. I hope the county commissioners take in consideration the wildlife habitat. That will be lost and the deer migratory paths that are right through there that have already been identified by fish and wildlife. that have already been identified by fish and wildlife. I do not believe that there has been full consideration of the wildlife that lives within that area, 575. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lois Reiners, and I live on West Side Road. I would like to say for the record that I'm opposed to this project. Make no mistake about it, this is bottom line about money and maximizing corporate profits. Doing the right thing for climate and the environment has no part in this. The reason they not put solar parks on agricultural ground is EDP digging, lower construction costs, and higher profits. Residents of Lake County are concerned about a commercial enterprise that will benefit only a very few in addition to silatorious effects on agricultural land, water rights, and wildlife habitat. Parson North of town is home to a herd of animals. We have, everyone who lives here has seen them. They spend quite a bit of time there. In addition to what EDP has gone and habitat. I don't believe that this proposal adequately addresses the need for that habitat protection. The substation parcels, although I have never seen a map that I could get sufficient detail out of, the substation parcels appear to be located in an area where Canada geese and many other varieties of wild waterfowl breastfeed and raise their young. They are on a flyway, and every bit of this habitat is important for their survival. The photo that Blue Marmot has distributed on Facebook showing she breastfeeding her solar panel is also disingenuous as every solar park I've ever seen was enclosed with a chain link fence topped with barbed wire, making the entire area inaccessible to wildlife as well as livestock. I don't understand how it is okay to ruin this habitat. And based on response I got to my comment to EDP, they will not commit to recycling the solar panels over their lifetimes. They will do their best to adequately dispose of them, which ultimately means they'll probably end up in our land causing hazardous material issues. And I know we have recycling problems here in Lake County, and our options are limited. But I think that would be a terrible idea to put that stuff in our land. Renewable energy is vital for our future, but at what cost? This needs to be done right, not to support the profit in a company that none of us benefit from. Thank you. Wait a minute, I thought, one more to my one. I live on West Side Road overlooking the solar fields down by the airport. I saw one of the Blue Marmot propaganda posts that said, "People don't know the solar parks, people don't know the solar fields." That is absolutely false. It is an eyesore. I have a friend that lives in a property adjacent to that solar park, and it affects their life on a daily basis. They are not any good. Thank you.
Scott Graham, 23369 Thomas Creek Road. Sorry, I don't have to go there. So I've heard something kind of interesting today from Logan. Initially, you know, this was going to give 12,000 homes enough, enough power for 12,000 homes. When I initially talked to them, they said, "Just like the drop of water going into a stream, and we don't know where the power's going." Now he states it'll be 12,000 homes in Oregon. You know, I guess the question would be, will we benefit from any of that? From my understanding, the people who have had solar powers around them, panels right now currently pay a higher power bill. So I hate to see that happen. I for a fact know that they had other opportunities to move outside of the 10-mile radius. I talked to a previous owner indirectly through his employer. They had some opportunities to make some other commitments. This other owner apparently wanted to be a partner in this project, and at that point, the conversation stopped rather quickly. You know, I think the other concern that a lot of us have is this is a public utility company, and why aren't we using public lands? Why do we have to go to a private entity to do this? Obviously, there is some monetary benefit from that person, the owner, right now, who obviously we all know is an absentee owner, doesn't give a probably rats behind him on his property, doesn't really ever been to see this property again. I also like to go back to the issue of farmable property. The property around me directly is the Maxwell Cattle Company's property. Obviously, if anybody's driven by there, they know that it's all been mowed, it's all been farmed, it's all been dry land farmed years back, just like some of the west side country has. So it is farmable, and it does go to the point that if you add water to it, it will grow. So that's why that land has been, looks different than the land adjacent to the Duburu property. The map of the solar panels came up, I guess there was a concern there for me. I mean, there's a lot of blotchiness in that map. Darwin can find that, there's blue sections. Obviously, they're not utilizing all that property. They say it's flat, but obviously, there's got to be more dilation and greater than 10% elevation in that property because they're not using it constituently. They're going to wrap up and hide fence 575 acres, but they're not utilizing all those acres unless they're utilizing, or they're mapping off more than 575, but they're only utilizing 575 acres of that property. I won't know the west side that was, but yeah, it's kind of interesting. The glare factor. I don't know where they study this. Maybe they study in Indiana. Maybe they study property values in Indiana like their board set at the Oaks. You guys live here, we've all driven around it. I took a picture of the fairgrounds, I mean, it'll blind you. I know people on the west side that have to paint their house twice since it's been up. So there is destructive property or destructive processes of the glare. As you can see, the property north or south of my place, I don't know if Darlin can, I'm kind of right there. There's a lot of gray or brown in there that's not blue. So they're taking up a ton of space, but they're not putting usable panels in that. And that area right there was like, this is a, sorry. What I was talking about, that area right there is highly used by the, no, go up down. Nope, down, right there. They live there, they live there in your realm. I personally videotaped two different herds this weekend traveling through that property, under my property, into the north of that pivot. I got them on camera right now. I see them daily if I'm home. I can't imagine that that is, it's totally going to affect that herd. You can't mitigate that property and make that herd move. That's where they live. And I totally respect John Muir, but I live there, I see it, I watch them. I'm there every day. It totally, two sides, the Maxwell Ranch, totally cuts off all that movement of that antelope deer, whatever. What is naming the animal? I guess the other question I would challenge Blue Marmot to is to openly give us, or if they have ever done this, how for a picture of what a returned property would, return it to a natural habitat would look like. And I don't know if they've been in business long enough to ever do that. So I guess that would be one thing to consider. Is it even a valid type dream?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Well, I guess it would challenge the Blue Marmot company to come up with or show us a revitalized property. Because I don't know if they've been in business 35 years long enough to ever redo a property and bring it back to its natural habitat. I can't imagine when you have that many different roads and that much stuff that you will ever bring it back or can plant enough stuff in there to refurbish that property. Guess, kind of erase what a lot of people said. This is our home, this is where we live here, this is where we grow our families. And I guess there's a lot of ethical and emotional consideration too what this is going to look like in the future for Lake County. Just kind of remove that this, now you've cornered Lake County, a lake view in three different sides with, or at least two different sides of mountains on the east with nowhere to grow. What about? Thank you for your time.
Any additional comments? Yes, Mike?
I'm Mike McGowan. I live at 435 Mountain View, and I'm one of the few people in this room who not only is not on a ranch or having agricultural experience. So I hope you'll, you know, accept my comments from that perspective. But I live here, and there's a reason that I live here, I love it here. I think that there's a way that the commissioners can, you know, pursue and support the growth of industrial businesses here and continue supporting ranching and farming families and businesses at the same time. So just to be clear, you know, I think solar development is a good thing for Lake County. I just want to make sure in my comments that we're doing it in the best way. And it has to be the best way for both, right? Obviously, this is a commercial project, you know, they're looking for profit, and, you know, there shouldn't be anything wrong with that. But they have to take into account the impact on the community. So I just, I have a couple of points that concern me, and I wanted to share them publicly. And by the way, you know, I have an industrial business too. And we're able to work here, and it's great, and we have the support of the commissioners. So I know they think carefully about jobs and investment and the way that the county can support different uses of the land and the resources that we have. So I think that's what this is really about. It's not, it's not personal, but then, you know.
Personal. I don't live next door, but I don't live next door. It's not personal to me, is what I should say. But here are my, here are my points. So the first one is that this process requires the company to ask for permission. So that's, that's what we're here about, right? There are rules in place, and they cannot do their development without permission. And that's fine, right? We all have to exist within the rule of law, and we all have to ask for permission for the things that we want to do. There, you know, there are lots of different rules. My question is, in exchange for getting the permission, if they do get it from the commissioners, what are they agreeing to do in exchange? What are the legal obligations of this company to Lake County over 35 years? And, you know, unless I'm mistaken, the answer is, there are none. There are none. They're just asking for permission. And then if they, if they get the permission, then they, you know, they have a plan. We've all seen the materials that they've shared, the presser. And it talks about 35-year period of development of solar facilities and an $80 million investment, $15 million in taxes. Are any of those things legally required from these companies? And I think the answer is no. It's an option for them. They get the permission, they put a lot of work into it. I'm sure they've put a lot of investment into it. Is it likely they'll proceed? Yeah, I think they probably will. Will they actually build all 50 megawatts to pay all the taxes over the course of 35 years? We don't know. Is there any obligation? I don't think so. What if they, what if those solar cells degrade? And after 10 years, they're not generating enough power to make sense? Then they've only paid 10 years' worth of taxes, so that's not $15 million. So my question is, let's be sure we know what we give and what they give. And let's don't, let's don't count on, you know, reputation or the size of their company or how many projects they've done. What's meaningful for us is what's for us. And let's see if there's a legal binding commitment or obligations. That's my first point. My second point is, even if we get a commitment, a binding commitment that the commissioners and the county can force, who's giving that commitment? So, you know, the materials that we saw came from EDP Renewables, North America. So that's a company that has a lot of projects. That company is not the applicant. They produce the materials, I'm sure they employ the Blue Marmot people who are here, but they're not on the paper, right? They're not the ones who are asking for permission. The ones who are asking for permission is a special purpose company called Blue Marmot 9 LLC. I'm just guessing here because I don't know the answer. But my guess is, there is no money, there are no employees, there is no credit history, there are no projects that that company has ever done before. There's nothing there because it's a special purpose company. And that's not a unique way to structure a large project like this. But that company is a limited liability company just for this project. So when EDPR talks about how many projects they have and how successful they've been, ask them if they're on the hook. And if EDPR is not on the hook, then all we're looking at is Blue Marmot LLC. And I'm pretty sure it's a shell right now. If they get the approval, then they'll have to put money in and they'll have contracts. The question is whether that company is responsible enough to the county and the commissioners over the entire 35-year period. And I'm not sure about that. One way to, you know, supplement the strength of this project is to ask the parent company, EDPR, "Will you please guarantee the responsibilities, the obligations of Blue Marmot?" That parent company has a lot of assets, right? It's part of an even larger global company. But if you ask them to guarantee, then, you know, then that little company makes more sense. If they don't guarantee, then I think we have to look more carefully at whether we're protected 100% through the project for the whole 35 years. Are we really going to see that taxmanus? Those are, those are the two points that I have. Let's know what the obligations are, and let's know who's giving us the legal certainty or the assurance that those obligations will be met. Because if we don't know those two things, then we can't work carefully on all the details. And I don't, and I don't think we'll have a good project going forward.
Additional comments?
Commissioners Chair, my name is John Muir. I'm here representing the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've submitted comments in writing. I'll let them stand a little bit, I think you can revisit those. I would simply highlight for commissioners' review that we have offered some suggested conditions of approval in our internal letter that I think would help address specifically the issue of added acreage for implementation. Send it for your consideration. The other, I feel that I would be remiss to leave the room without taking the opportunity to explain a little bit what mitigation is and what it isn't. I wouldn't want anybody in here to believe that I personally or that the department believes that this mitigation plan truly represents a dismissal of the impacts that this project was to be constructed. There's no arguing if a project was constructed that has directed impacts on the utility of those acres. What mitigation is, is an attempt to offset some of those impacts as best as can be accomplished by uplifting an additional site. So just as point of clarification, there's no dismissing impacts from 575 acres being developed. And that's not the attempt of mitigation. And that's not the attempt of mitigation, of mitigation plan yet. Thank you very much for your time.
Additional comments? Again, we, we can have all, all the letters and the emails and everything that people have submitted and worked and written to Darwin over the past. And the record is going to be, is going to remain open for the next few weeks even. And to save time, if people feel like, even if you have submitted those letters, if you want to just reiterate something, pull something out that you feel is very important in your notes, you don't have to read the whole thing. But if there's something of essence of importance that you want to draw our attention to, you're more than welcome to do so.
I guess I'd like to say one thing about their submittal.
Would you like this one to come up?
Sure. Joe Cozzino again. While I'm with the Oregon Department of Transportation, all of our projects were accompanied by different disciplines of engineering. Each plan set had engineering stamps on it, had plan sets. I haven't been able to find anything or get anything from Blue Marmot that has a seal on it or any type of plan of what they're putting in. All we know is they're putting in something in the blue area, but we have no idea where it really is. We have no engineering stamp, no engineering certificate, and no guarantee. There also needs to be plans submitted exclusively through the federal government of erosion control. Anything over an acre, doesn't matter if they're disturbing the acre or not, if you're building on that acre site or bigger, it has to have an erosion control plan and you need to have mitigation for that water that runs off of that land. A good example of it is the prison just down the road from us. They have retention ponds out in front so that the water will actually go into something subtle and that can be cleaned out from that pond and not go through the downstream and ruin, ruin the stream bed for the route down. But right now, we have nothing. Nothing submitted that actually shows us what's going to actually be built, other than a very sketchy print on a map. So that's my, that's one of my big concerns. As a resident of Lake County, are we going to be on the hook for that if it goes bad? What happens if those panels start blowing off? Winds we get up on that hill where I live, seventy miles an hour, no problem. Seeing us eighty, eighty-five, ninety miles an hour up there. And the weasels are around the top of the hill. Those panels are going to be exposed to that wind year after year after year. Still, no engineering stamp on anything yet. We really need that. Thank you.
If there are no additional comments from anyone who hasn't spoken yet, I'm going to be good time to turn it over for rebuttal. Then we can take a break. Good point, Darrell. So the time being, we'll take a quick break. The time is three twenty. We'll take a five minute break. We'll come back in, well, let's, let's just make it a ten minute break. We'll come back in three thirty. Hey, Dr. Cozino, it's a few minutes after three thirty. Uh, I will ask if there's any additional public comment. Again, is there? Yes, ma'am.
Again, this was Lois Frank, and the hall starts with her last question, so I'll.
Sort of, yeah.
I heard him make a comment during his presentation that just gave me pause because it shows how out of touch this company is with our community, our county, our part of the world and our daily lives. He mentioned obstacles. I'm sure that he probably intended to talk about the, you know, they are not obstacles. It just shows how ignorant they are of the agriculture that they are trying to destroy. I asked, I wanted to put up the map of the solar, you know, again. And that is in a long, narrow stretch that totally, if that is all fenced around, that totally blocks any migration of deer and lo, whatever, across that corridor. And migration routes are really important as well as habitat. Agricultural land, whether it's something that you can plant crops on, whether you graze cattle on it, whether we're, whether somebody is grazing cattle on it right now or could in the future, it's still agricultural land and as that is such a large part of Lake County's fabric, we need to preserve our agricultural land. One thing that has struck me as far as all these solar sites we see popping up in central Oregon and southern Oregon, rural Oregon, is that why aren't we putting these solar things all over the buildings, apartment structures, whatever, in the city? Do that. I mean, that makes way more sense. They're already paved over, they've got flat roofs a lot of the time. And I think, you know, and, and we are giving this power to them. So maybe they should have the solar field on their buildings, on their commercial structures, whatever. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, I have a couple.
Yeah, sure.
Eric Nerr again. And so during the presentation earlier this afternoon, it was stated that it was twelve thousand Oregon homes. And within their PowerPoint, it actually says Oregon homes, not twelve thousand homes somewhere within the, the grid. So I think that's probably a little just, uh, a slide of direction of trying to say we're supporting Oregon when we know that's not true. At least for the twelve thousand homes. Also, it was stated that PGE relented in granting them to continue on when they went from five sites down to this one site. Why did they relent? And why did they deny three times prior? That, that's never been stated. Also, when it came to glare, it wasn't the fact that there was glare impinging. They use the term harmful glare. That is, there won't be harmful glare coming off the, the panels. That term was used. Also, when it came to fire prevention or preventative, preventative measures. One, access into solar facilities for fire apparatus can be difficult at times. We did have a fire within the solar facility down by the airport. Fire apparatus actually got trapped within there trying to fight the fire as the solar panels went from an angle to flat and it caused a, a delay in getting the fire apparatus out. Plus, what are the safety and risk mitigations of if the solar panels actually catch on fire or are impinged upon with flames and that help impact to the firefighters and first responders that are out there? That has not been addressed either. And also they mentioned fire preventative measures for the wildlife mitigation lands. What are those preventative measures that are proposed?
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes. Ma'am.
I am Tavi Barnes, three seventeen South H Street. I'm a part of OSU. And I have a couple of questions that I think that need to be maybe clarified by Blue Marmot is one, mitigation of runoff and how do they keep the solar panels clean? Because I know from experience from coming from another state that their chemicals that get put on those panels keep them clean. Where does that water go when they clean, if they use water? And they talked about, they kind of flashed up mitigation procedures or best management practices up in the wetlands area. Are they committed to be taking care of that mitigation for the full thirty-five years as well as, you know, after construction? Because you're in an area that has very little water. The last point that I think they need to clarify on is if there is a regrow and runoff, what's the implication of groundwater in that area? Now, I'm not, I'm not so certain, but I'm sure that there's lots of well water in there. So are the chemicals that are going to eventually percolate into groundwater and impact well and water quality. So I think that they kind of lost everything that we need to have some clarification on those types of procedures. Their standard operating, operating procedures.
Tavi, are you speaking on behalf of yourself or on behalf of the nation?
I am speaking on behalf of myself. I just, just as a comment and say here, you know, listening to this, because we have had issues in the other state that I came from with, you know, solar companies and, and the impacts, the negative impacts on land use and agriculture in general.
Good. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you. Additional comments? If there are no additional comments, I will turn it over for rebuttal from the applicant. Looks like you drew the short form.
Yeah, it seems to happen to me.
That was an interesting segue.
Yeah, it's back to the, who's going to have to do it? Who wants to me? Um, I'm Max Yocque with Wasil Reeves on behalf of the applicant and thank you commissioners for your attention today. Thank you to the members of the public for providing comment. And I'll start just by saying that a lot of the questions for clarification are addressed in the application narrative. I know it's really long and dense, but a lot of those specific questions can be found in the materials that we've already prepared. There are very specific project layout maps that were all prepared by registered engineers. And so if you do have any specific questions on the project specifics, how things are going to be handled, impacts on water, wildlife, things like that, I'd be happy to point you to where in the application materials those are located. The second thing that I'll say is that we've addressed the majority of the public comments today already in our rebuttal to the planning commission. So I'll refer the commission to those written rebuttal arguments that are in the record for most of those comments that we've heard today. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you may have. But I'll talk about a couple of points that, in response to the public testimony that we've heard this afternoon. So the first one is following on what we heard from John Muir at the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Is just a little bit of clarification on how the state regulates impacts on habitat, maybe, um, impacts? Excuse me. How the state regulates impacts on habitat. And as John stated, you know, this isn't the type of situation where we're saying there's not going to be any impact. That's the point of the mitigation plan. Applicants for these types of facilities are required to assess the habitat onsite, which we've done. And for any unavoidable impacts, provide mitigation. So for the types of habitat that exists on this property, there's different categories. One is category two, one is category four. And what's required under the ODFW regulations is that you mitigate for no net loss and for category two habitat and a net benefit of the impact. So that's where the one point eight to one mitigation ratio comes from. You know, we look at what the impacts are going to be and we negotiate a mitigation ratio with ODFW that's specific to the impacts, specific to the site. And that everyone agrees will address those unavoidable impacts on the antelope that, that have been observed by members of the public on this property. So the specifics of that mitigation plan have been agreed to by ODFW. And I, to my best knowledge, compliance with that mitigation plan is recommended as a conditional approval, which will ensure that, you know, impacts of wildlife and habitat have been addressed. And the second thing I'll, I'll just talk about quickly and before we answer questions is that we came here today after talking to Mr. McGowan and thought that he raised some good points about concerns with decommissioning and financial assurance plans. So the first thing that I'll say is that the taxes and economic contribution correspond to the impact and, and the size of the project. You know, we have every reason to construct this facility to the maximum extent that we're allowed by the conditional use permit up to fifty megawatts. And part of that is because we have contractual obligations to provide the power that we produce to the utility company. So there's just really no incentive to not produce this entire project and do it in accordance with the way, with the conditions that are imposed by the submission and stating federal law. So in addition to that, because of Mr. McGowan's concerns, which we thought were, were well taken, we've agreed to provide financial assurance at the point of construction rather than two years prior to decommissioning, which is what we have proposed in the application. And in terms of, you know, what company would be on the hook and all that, that, that's the point of the financial assurance, right? So that if something happens and the project needs to be decommissioned, there is a financial assurance already available to the county to make sure that those decommissioning steps that were outlined in the plan actually occur. So with that, we're happy to take questions or if there's additional rebuttal by our team. But as I mentioned, we will submit written comment and rebuttal that responds kind of more robustly to all the comments that we've heard today. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I do have a question. You can, you can come up. And maybe this question would be more suitable if John Muir was still in the room with ODFW. But I think someone brought up an excellent point. I guess I'm looking for some clarification. If you mitigate for net loss, how is it that you can't actually say that you're mitigating impacts, wildlife and habitat by using land? For the mitigation that's already applied habitat, if you're mitigating for zero net loss?
Right. So you're mitigating for no net loss and a net benefit, right, of habitat impacts. So the point is to take other habitat that is not currently or, you know, at that level of category that's been designated by the state and raise it up to a higher category to kind of replace the, the category, the category of habitat that's been removed.
So you're talking about enhancement, not really, it's, it's not necessarily adding or, or putting other land in addition what is already there and restoring it to wildlife habitat.
Setting it aside so that it can be used for animal and it's cancerous to make sure that it's up to the level required by ODFW. Well, I know that I've seen the written questions in your guys' rebuttal, the written rebuttals. I felt like some of these questions were new today or, or had a different ankle to them. Are you, are you planning to address any of these others or in specific or?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll be addressing all of the public comments in specific in, in our written rebuttal that we submit. Just to make sure that, you know, we restate clearly what has been said before the commission and, and provide a robust response. But if there's. But if there's, um, you know, specific comments that you'd like us to address now, we're happy to.
Well, I go through my notes. I try to write down the highlights from everybody. One thing that, uh, I remember early in the process, I don't know if it was you or the previous person, Eric, um, but you guys own the rights to sixty megawatts and you're gonna utilize fifty.
We've released one of those.
You already released?
We've already released it. We now only have the right to fifteen megawatts.
Okay, so you've released the other ten?
Yeah.
Who'd you release it to?
Uh, it goes back to Pacific ore.
Goes back to Pacific ore?
Yeah.
Is it still a fact that our power lines here with PGE can only hold sixty megawatts? Or is that gonna change?
Um, the, so the power lines near Lake County and what we would say?
South County, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, first off, we would be interconnecting with the Pacific ore substation, not the PGE. Um, and there's transmission rights we have to secure in order to get it on the Pacific ore's system and on the PGEs. Um, part of both that transmission process and the interconnection process is deploying certain upgrades that allow for our project to come online, um, and then there are, um, subsequent projects to us. Um, it falls on primarily the, the project developer to pay upgrade fees. And so as additional projects come online, it will be up and down for those bills.
Um, another question I didn't hear, um, that I'd just like to ask, the question of, landowner originally planted a lot of trees on this property. Are you cutting down those trees?
Uh, we will have to clear some trees and shrub the, make some space for the panels.
Uh, so timber is cropped.
But if that timber was not grown as it's grown on that land?
As part of the record, these guys are giving us money. Thank you. Appreciate your cooperation.
Our understanding is that that, because that is private land, the landowner can deal with those trees. That's who so desires. And if you were to sell that land to us, you would then have that right.
I, I would have to go through my notes, but I have questions, uh, from all the people there. They're gonna cover that, I assume.
We can wait. Take one of the ladies out themselves. If you have additional rebuttal, would you like to provide on some of the other public comments?
Just a couple, um, like we said, we're not gonna regress everything. Um, a few points that had come up earlier, um, Mr. Constantino's, uh, comment about the offer that we made. Um, that offer was not, was never framed as, nor ever meant as, uh, quote unquote, hush money. Um, we, as a company, um, are trying to do what we can to mitigate the impacts to the neighbors at this project. Um, we are trying to be as good of neighbors as is possible. And so that's why I gave Mr. Constantino about a payment. Um, the way that we formulated that payment and the way that I have explained it to Mr. Constantino is, um, the standard that we have to work off of, um, internally, unless we're informed of some other standard, is what it would cost to mitigate visual impacts. Um, so we performed an internal analysis of what that would cost. And we offered Mr. Constantino a multiple of that to allow him to perform whatever landscaping he so desires to offset those visual impacts. That is the, that is the standard that I have to work off of. Um, we understand that it might not be what Mr. Constantino wanted. Um, I asked Mr. Constantino for additional context as to how we should formulate an offer and he did not provide me with any other than saying it should be a higher offer. That's all.
True. I can provide you with the email. I'm not gonna sit here and listen to my name flatter.
Okay, it's just, there's, there's a process for this. Appreciate cooperation. I understand the frustration that I have.
I believe what Mr. Constantino is referring to is an email indicating that he had performed some analysis about property values near his and came up with an evaluation of his own property value and, um, noted that there would be, um, he figured the impact with, to his property value was higher than what we were offering. Um, and I, and he also noted that there was a number that he would like to see from us. Asked him what that was and that is what he did not reply with. So we're still open to and trying to negotiate and find some sort of way to be a good neighbor to the folks up there. But we're, we're trying to work through that. So far, clearly, uh, have not been able to. For the record, there are other neighbors that we have engaged with, have tried to engage with as well, one of which has, um, you know, accepted our offering, yields it as they. So we're trying to discuss those conversations with the most impacted neighbors first. And then try to reach those neighbors that are not as impacted as, for example, Mr. Constantino. Um, one other piece, um, we, Mr. O'Brien brought up the doorknocking that we've been doing. We have been going door to door in town, speaking with folks. We approached each of those conversations, um, introducing ourselves, saying exactly who we're with, asking if they, if whoever we're speaking with has heard Blue Armament project and if they have any questions or would like any additional information. We approached all of these conversations purely as we are trying to inform folks about the project. Um, we are not trying to slant them one way or another. We're just talking about the project, answering any questions. I can tell you, uh, right now that I had two half hour conversations last night with electrical engineers that just pick my brain about everything about the project. And there was no impetus to try and get them to sign some sort of letter of support. Um, I sat there and answered all of their questions to the best of my ability for thirty minutes. Um, and then they thanked me for my time and I kept going. That's the mindset with which we've approached these conversations is we're truly just trying to help provide more information about the project to folks that haven't heard about it. We have encountered a lot of folks that haven't heard about the project. Um, so there have been folks that are opposed to the project. None of them, I will say, have slammed doors in our faces. They've all been very kind, um, but there have also been a number of folks that haven't heard about the project. We do our best to tell them about it. Um, there are some folks that are indifferent, don't care. Um, there are also folks that are supportive, have no interest in signing anything, because they don't want to get involved in political pieces of this project, which they don't agree with. Um, and then we only ever bring up the idea of signing a letter if someone expresses support for the project and asks if there's something they can do. Um, and that's where those thirty-five letters have come in. Um, so that is my piece about, uh, letters and the doorknocking that we've been doing. Finally, a couple of final points. Um, Eric Nurr brought up the fact, um, that he and I had a phone call a while back in which we said that we could not move the project, um, which is, is not false. Uh, that is a conversation that he and I had. Um, in terms of these conversations, uh, and I guess in terms of how the project could be moved or couldn't be moved, as I stated earlier, um, there's a number of surveys, um, and engineering that has to go in to understand where a project can be built. Um, we did that to the west side of the Dubrood parcel because we found that that was the better constructible side. Um, by the time that PGE gave us the clearance to switch to a consolidated site, that was earlier this year, there would not be time to conduct all of the necessary surveys and engineering necessary in order to move the project anywhere else because, and still meet our contractual obligations. We have to have this project online by, um, the end of next year. Um, and so we could not go out and perform additional surveys and do additional engineering to the point that it would allow us to get our CUP permit in, in time, get the permit approved and still go out for construction in time to get this project built in time to meet our contractual obligation. And that is why we are not able to move the project to the east side of Dubrood parcel. Um, and that's what I tried to convey to Mr. Nurr. Um, another point that's been brought up by a few people, um, both in this meeting and while we've been out doorknocking is the, where does the electricity go? Yes, in the, um, presentation it says twelve thousand Oregon homes. Um, the, the way electricity works is the second it hits the grid, the electrons go wherever they're needed, which means it will probably be used in Lake County. Um, because that is the closest to where that Pacific ore pole or substation is. Once it hits the grid, those electrons just go wherever they're most needed. Um, our contract with PGE just means they are paying us to put those electrons on the grid. And we need that contract in order for our project to be economically feasible. Um, you wouldn't see a budget bill just to sell onto the market without any sort of contract guaranteeing some sort of returns. Um, and then lastly, um, and like Max said, we'll, we'll address additional comments later on in written rebuttal, um, there's been a number of questions about permits. Um, many of those permits are going to need to be submitted, will be submitted, but they are not required for this process. Um, things like stormwater permits, runoff permits, those are required for pre-construction, but they're not required at this point, which is why they're not publicly available. Um, and that is, um, those were my, my continued statements, but I'm gonna have to address any questions that were brought up.
Is there a map of the arable acres?
Um.
Of the project?
Defined by like soil?
Yes.
Yes, and I believe it's in the application, but I can certainly.
There is such a map that shows arable acres?
Yeah, we've got, um, I know there's a map in the application that shows like five soil type where like how the project is laid out since this one. Uh, not in there. No, in the, the big, yeah.
Yep.
Hey Paul.
It's in the, uh, original application, figure nine. Which is appendix A to the original application.
Gotcha. Yes.
Yeah, I know, I've seen it.
There's an overview sheet showing the whole project in more detail coming out behind you.
So am I correct then, according to this map, that there are no class one or two soils? Uh, Paul? Maybe that's a question for you, Paul?
Uh, yeah, I'm just, we're gonna look back at this if we're here and if we will not break them that up. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
No, 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 stickability class one or two. And that would be, if there were, that would be, uh, you'd find the higher value one.
Yeah. No, no problem.
Appendix A, uh, figure nine. I believe there's, uh, no photo maps. There's at least two different maps on soil, uh, capable of classes.
And there's also like, uh, they call it table three dash one. This is in the, uh, main document, the application. And that, we have all the numbers to help indicate the soil subjects. We've got a figure three dash one.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to go back to Mr. McGowan. Had a couple of questions there. He talked about Blue Armament nine. And if this project is approved, it will be called Blue Armament nine? Is that correct?
The, the project, um, is, and, and contracts, uh, are under Blue Armament nine LLC. Yeah.
Okay. So. I, I understand this is normal practice maybe to move it to a specific name.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so it is tracked to a specific site. Help me out a little bit. What, why are, is there a, what my concern is, is that you guys sold us and we no longer have control of anything because, you know, we, we may get some commitments made here, we may not. But if it's Blue Armament nine, what if it's Tabaco Road twelve tomorrow, you know, the next day?
Right, right. Um, I, I guess the first point is that we, we do not have any intention of selling this project. We, as a company, um, own and operate our project for the long term. Um, if we were to sell it, we would be selling the Blue Armament nine LLC entity, um, to which this permit would be detached. Um, and so that would run with the project. Whoever were to buy it, um, would have to abide by all of the same, uh, regulations, stipulations, amendments that we've made in putting together this project.
So are there any examples within EDPR, uh, where you've done that?
Where we sold the project?
Have you built?
Um, yes, I don't know the names of them off the top of my head, but there are projects that is, um, they should need to operate under all the same prescriptions or, you know, things.
Um, quick question, something that came up several times. And you actually brought it up as well on the water monitoring, the runoff. Um, where in the application do you have, uh, that analysis and runoff? Yeah. Based, based on water runoff and everything else? I mean, we, we have it on a adjacent property actually just across the road.
Right.
On our landfill and we have monitored that very nicely.
Understood, yeah.
With PGE requirements. So I'm just kind of curious where that was in the application.
Right, we're in the middle of our, um, permit process with Department of State lands, um, and Army Corps of Engineers. So that's one 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 permit that is not completed yet. Um, and then the stormwater permits are also not, um, completed, but will be before the deconstruction and the, obviously, uh, the river as well.
Yeah, Logan, Paul again. You're focusing me?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so you are correct. Um, there was a comment about needing a erosion sediment control plan for the permit for constructions for water. That's something they will have to, um, obtain for the order of permanent environmental quality. We need to get a MPE, it's called a MPE, twelve hundred C permit. And that is for erosion sediment control. But it's something they'll need to apply for in the continuing process to the ground building, you know?
All, just for clarification, all solar projects have done that? And, and it's just submitted into the record at once they get it accomplished?
At what point?
It's, it's prior to construction, just prior to construction.
Prior to construction, but is it a condition of approval?
Yeah, it's, it's always part of, condition of approval number one always states that they have to, you know, comply with all state, federal, local regulations. you know, comply with all state, federal, local regulations, so.
And can stormwater disallow it?
Sometimes we've been specific, not always.
And?
That's definitely one of them that they know they have to get.
And the monitoring of that is typically the EQ.
Since we're talking about erosion, uh, that property out there is fairly flat, but it's not flat. If you guys were to get approval, here's one of the first things we'd see would be some land planes trying to make it as level and flat as possible, or what is the?
No, um, as discussed, I mean, when I was talking about the alternative analysis is um, like, yes, the land out there has some undulations, um, we would not be leveling the whole thing related to level. Panels can sit on, you know, like hills and and kind of uh, undulating land. We would have to clear shrubs to the level that we need to be able to get in and, you know, put in the piles, install the panels, perform construction. But we wouldn't be going out there and leveling the entire project study.
So you say you've covered that in the uh, alternatives analysis?
Uh, I just discussed, all I'm saying that we covered in the alternative analysis is that we were looking for land with less than ten percent grade. Is once you, once you get that ten percent, you can't put panels in economically without leveling it out. Having to basically tier the project.
And just to add on to that, as Paul mentioned, um, any erosion or soil impacts will be addressed as part of the permitting process for the NPDS twelve hundred C permit. Um, and there's some brief discussion of that at, I believe it's um, page four dash twenty of the application where we talk about erosion impacts and the permits that would be required.
When viewing this property, uh, there's a power line that goes from basically Tom Street Road, runs north and south. I don't know where it ends exactly. If we were back to that map, Darwin. Oh, maybe you got a better one. Where does the uh, project lie? Is it gonna be west of that power line?
That power line runs right down basically that property boundary on the.
Is it the red line there?
Yeah, uh, no, sorry Darwin, right uh, north and south. Right there, yeah, it runs right along that, that's out. So we have to have.
So you're east of it?
We're east and west, we're on both sides. But we have to have certain buffers, um, ensuring that we're far enough away from that power line. So we've got panels on both sides, we've got roads on both sides, but we'll, we have to buffer the panels far enough away from it.
That particular area though, there's nothing west of the power line.
Uh, right, yeah, right there. Where the power lines. West of that, yeah, oh, I'm looking, there you go.
Sorry, it's not true.
So then, uh, Dr. Graham talked about those gaps there in this uh, this area to the west, why are the gaps there?
There are required setbacks from wetlands. And there's some areas there that are not wetlands that are um, uh, general restrictions that we have to follow.
For example, right out in here?
Yeah, most of those are are wetlands and streams that we have to avoid.
Logan, do you have that, the city plan available that's kind of in the back?
Uh, yeah, Darwin, it's the very, very back of the presentation.
Oh, okay, I know, presentation, so.
And I I only raise that because it does show where the wetlands and streams are, knowing just where the panels are approved. And so they specifically place panels to look at and as a part of what possible.
Uh, just grab, grab, grab this cool bar and just hold it there.
Oh.
And then you'll go up a little bit, so those are more detailed drawing. Like as you go up there, that shows like where the wetlands are, what the buffers are that we have to maintain that.
Eric's house right here, right?
Yes.
And Joe's would be approximately. Some of them, I'm sorry.
Not exactly.
Yeah.
So another point that we've probably asked a number of times, I believe, nine and ten, if you'd like to review this for a later rebuttal. But um, fire preventive measures on the wildlife, um, lands as well as within the facility itself, if you extrapolate a little bit more than that, we um, what the what those measures actually are?
Yeah, um, a lot of it, I mean, we'll provide more in detail, um, if it's in, it's it's certainly within the habitat mitigation plan, we lay it out in more detail. It's primarily brush clearing, brush minimization in such a way that they're the sensible space. And now part of it as well as we chose thirty foot roads, corner roads were requested to be fit for a fire break as well.
And those are those necessary?
Um, the, yeah, if you go down, just go down Darwin. So, uh, maybe that, yeah, sorry, that, right there. So you can see there and then on the other map we showed earlier, I think they were yeah, it's those, those roads were required um, around the outside of the project anywhere where she were next to like directly adjacent to another property that we did not own. So, um, that's why they were posted and how they were built in.
Why are those roads?
Uh, thirty feet because of, um, you know, design respect, so that they could drive their rigs out there.
Just keep it in mind. Do you have pullouts periodically, unnecessary?
Yeah, they requested that we have pullouts every, so that's what we could find it. There's, you can kinda see, it's all black and white, so there's, there's like hammerhead pullouts approximately every, every.
But you know, like things.
Here, here.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm looking at, okay. Okay.
So the road appears to stop in this one, uh, northeast corner. Does it have a terminal?
Uh, if it doesn't, it will, um, it's, that's.
It's awfully hard to turn on a big fire truck.
Yeah, no.
Well, my question is, if you have a wetland fire coming from north, so.
Yeah. You're strapped.
You don't have a defensive space there.
Coming from like the rest of the.
Amount of size of the project.
Onto the project.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there's, there's a perimeter road on the eastern side.
Not that I like roads, basically.
Yeah, but, yeah. No, understood. Uh, there's the perimeter road on the other side that would prevent it from going east.
And the red?
Yeah, or from going west, sorry. Yeah.
But we have no roads on the east side.
Uh, not currently, no.
Do you have another rebuttal?
You mentioned the, you had some other properties that you had on standby or, I don't know, what was the proper wording there?
Um, uh, well, there's additional land currently um, under negotiation that would round out that thousand acres that we need for the habitat mitigation area.
To get you to the one point eight?
Yes, um, and we've agreed to terms on that, we just haven't made the actual agreement at this point, but we're close.
What is the difference of acres in order to meet the two to one?
Uh, we need it on the one point eight. I, and this is mental math, but I'm pretty sure we need like an additional hundred and fifty acres.
One thousand one hundred and fifty.
So the difference?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it's, we've got seven seventy-five, we need roughly a thousand, um, so we need about two hundred and twenty-five more acres.
Which we, which the full is.
Yes, which we, is, with the the land that we are near, can't really, has that.
Have reached the one point eight or have reached the two to one?
Uh, it's reached the one point eight.
Gotcha.
Two to one point eight.
And just to clarify, Commissioner, is it two to one mitigation ratio is not required by statute or regulation is what ODFW typically recommends as the standard, but again, uh, they look specifically at the site characteristics, the habitat that's on site. Um, and it changes every mitigation plan versus other kind of Oregon has a different mitigation ratio depending on site specifics.
So the reason I ask the question, been brought up a few times, some of this about ethics, about, uh, I think, uh, Clark Maxwell mentioned about legacy, where are we leaving, where are we gonna be looking at, things like that. If you're gonna secure an additional thousand acres, why can't we move this project a little bit to get away, further away from these homes?
As discussed earlier, we have commercial obligations to bring this project on by the end of next year, um, if it's not. The survey works itself, we take four months, uh, at least.
We're in the drought.
What's that?
We're in a drought.
Well, it's, it's, it's wetland surveys, cultural surveys, um, and wildlife surveys all have to go into that and would have to be done on that eastern side of the land. Those all take, like I said, uh, take time and then also with those surveys, like for example, the wetlands. You perform the wetland delineations, or you perform the wetland surveys, you have to submit that to D S L for delineation. They have to incur when you're delineating, and then you can file your D E A. That timeline in and of itself is like a nine month timeline. And so to, just to do the wetlands on the northeastern side of that property, uh, would put us in the middle of next year, and there's no way we could build the project in five, under the twenty one two at that point.
So what I'm hearing is not having ample enough time to evaluate and properly cite the location to lessen the impacts of the adjacent lands. Because immediately that, also in testimony, there is then a full acknowledgement that there are impacts to some of the property owners by the developer. So, and I'll just, as an example, use the one piece that is fenced off, according to this map, separately from the western site, uh, the body southeast, um, southwest, yeah, southwest portion of the uh, application. Which, you know, I mean, it it would be impossible for me to say that there are no impacts to the homeowner that lives right there on that east, um, side of the road, being that he's surrounded on three sides, almost four, actually, by solar panels. Even if it does have appropriate setbacks of five hundred feet, whatever, that's a big debate over what appropriate setbacks are. So I guess my question is, okay, even if we were to say that the majority of this, of the site doesn't have impacts or doesn't have severe impacts, if a portion of it does, that portion needs to be looked at. And I guess where I'm at is I'm wondering if, I'm trying to bear in mind with your timeline, and I know I'm probably going outside of, you know, I'm, I'm asking a question, but is there clarification on, on my part? We say the rest of the site is okay, but that site right there obviously has impacts to a landowner. To mitigate those impacts, would we approve, say, or or would one portion of the site be approved? But another section, even just that, or a small section taken out and be worked on a separate, separate application, basically? In another area, moved to another site? Time of construction takes time and everything else, and I don't know what your deadline is on your contractual agreements with the power company per se. Honestly, for for, on our point of view, we just need to make sure that we're being thorough and that we're looking at the application appropriately. So I'm just curious on timeline.
Right.
Would that be a separate application? Or a separate application could be put in for your megawatt capacity? If a proportion of this application, this application would be taken out?
I don't know that I can speak to that.
I understand.
At this moment.
So those two blocks are a hundred and seven acres. Okay. Right? They're in that southwest corner on the west side of Red Hill Road. Is there, are you telling me that there is no opportunity that you could have a scheme strip of a hundred and seven acres? On each side there? And not go through nine months of the paperwork?
I, any additional land basically outside, um, where that fenced area is, um, has not been surveyed. And so to build outside of that space would require additional survey. And would basically, would just suffer that nine month timeline.
Why didn't you survey beyond the project?
Um, as mentioned before, um, the western side was seen as the better spot to construct. And we, I mean, I wasn't here at that time, but I think we we figured that was enough to fit fifty megawatts, and so that's what we surveyed. And we knew we were gonna need habitat mitigation lands, and we knew that the eastern side of the project would serve better for that as well. And so between those two, we just surveyed the western side.
Mr. Albertson. Uh, good question. Commissioner Albertson, I wanna make sure that I'm being respectful with your presence here, do you have anything to add if you're still on?
Well, I I totally agree with the impression that we just brought up. I guess I'm, I'm ha, I have some. Problem says is, as Logan and I have discussed in the previous meeting, EDP started out on the wrong foot, because we didn't make counting, and so it's hard for us build that trust back. And I'm, you know, without sticking my head out there too far, um, you know, it's not the landlord's fault that you're running out of time. If you would have, at the company, I'm, don't take this personally, Logan, but I think you're the person. So if the company would have come to the commissioners right off the bat, come to the people who play county right off the bat, we wouldn't be in this spot. So if the company would have come to the commissioners right off the bat, come to the people of Lake County right off the bat, we wouldn't be in this spot. And. So, you know, it's, we have, we have to. We have to make sure there's not any, maybe bad facts, not only on the nature, but on our, the, our neighbors that are living around. And, um. I, I just, I'm a problem about speeding too much and, um. You know. I don't think you guys have been straightforward with this, even in your own comments, um, you're a lawyer, I don't know what his name is. Said that we listened to the people of Lake County, that's why we changed, um, locations and. So you and I both know that's not true. We know why we changed locations. And so be straight up with folks, let's get this fixed. That's all I have to say.
Up today for me. Uh, is there any additional rebuttal or comments from the applicant?
Thank you, commissioners, we'll provide additional written rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would be obliged to, I'm happy to open it up for additional comments from the public. However, those comments would be restricted to only the two rebuttal just given. By the applicant.
Not new comment.
Not new comment.
I can provide some. I wrote some. I guess this is more questions from the rebuttal.
I just named for the record.
Uh, Eric Ner, two one six seven five, Red Hill Road. And, and so they have released ten megawatts already from the original sixty down to fifty. They're saying they, they're required to put in fifty megawatts, but obviously they can sell that back. And, and reduce the footprint to be more maybe, uh, friendly with the neighbors. Speaking of their neighbors, they've said multiple times in the application, no negative impacts, but yet. We're paying some of the neighbors because of negative impacts. And, and I would say not all neighbors have received an offer, but obviously some have. Because there's negative impacts to their property. They state they have not sold a project for termination to Commissioner Schuman, but then said, yes, there are examples of that. But originally had said, no, there's not, they keep all their projects. Has said, no leveling would, would happen, but then stated, that's the entire project would not be leveled. But are there some parts that have been leveled? And I would say if we could zoom into the project area and we say there's no cultivation that's happened. It kind of looks like, if you look at the aerial photography, especially on that long. It's furrows. It looks like cultivation to me. So if you zoomed in on that. If you keep zooming in, you'll see furrows over here. Keep zooming out, yeah. Keep zooming, there you go. Looks like cultivation.
Thank you.
Amanda O'Brien again. So just three points in reference to the rebuttal. One, when they were talking about the mitigation at one point eight one. They haven't secured that other property to make it a thousand acres yet. So their property is actually seven hundred and eighty-seven. By my math, that's one point seven three to one. That's a big difference. But if the standard is one to two. They need to be upheld to that same standard as everybody else, not one to one point eight just because they tried. Uh, that one to two ratio is one thousand one hundred and fifty acres. That's a difference of three hundred and sixty-three acres off of what they have now. So they need to be held to that same standard as everybody else, not just because they tried and couldn't get that extra hundred and fifty acres. The other two points I want to bring up based off of questions asked by you guys in the rebuttal was one of the things was. Logan said that the electrons go wherever they're needed most and likely will go to Lakeview because it's the closest. So if they're going to Lakeview, my question is, how can they be selling the power to Portland General? That, that makes no sense. The power is not being used to power homes here. It's being sold to Portland General and sell and used up north for those twelve thousand homes. The other thing was Mr. Scholmberger had brought up, you know, why don't you consider some of these other areas or doing this and that? And the answer is, we don't have time. Well, I remember. One of my elementary school teachers, because I would rush through everything, pounded it into my head, waste makes waste. And that is so true. There is a big difference between doing something quickly and doing it correctly. We can do it correctly. Or we can do it quickly. And from the looks of it, we can't do both. And so in the end, you have to ask yourself what's more important, to do it correctly or to do it quickly? My opinion is to do it correctly, but that's gonna be a decision for you guys.
Joe Bosnino here again. I'd like to ask the commissioner a question. Are any of these other landowners here that have signed agreements with these guys for money, are they here? That's what they would expect them to make backlog, not gonna do it. And Logan was talking about the land won't be all of nothing. They're gonna terrace the property behind my property in the tears. There's no other way to do it. It's steep in there. It's well over ten percent. There's a ravine in there that's steeper than a cow's face. It's steep in there. The only way they can actually put panels in most of that area is terrace it. So they are going to have to do something like that. The area, both areas that are at the south end in blue. Those are steeply graded. Those will need to be terraced to carry panels. So they can actually orient the panels and track the sun. Most of that property actually slopes off to the north at this time. So they're gonna have to do some major work in there, groundwork to get that. In respect of the panels, ten percent if it's hot. Thank you.
Any additional comments pertaining to the rebuttal? Like to offer another opportunity just for the, say, the process to the applicant to rebut any of the comments, maybe today. Some response to the first rebuttal. You, you don't, you're not obligated to, but I'm offering it, and obviously the record is remaining open for the next few days.
I'll, I'll hit on a couple of points.
Okay.
To Mr. Ners' point about, we, we had sixty megawatts, we now have fifty megawatts. We had initially secured, um, it was actually sixty-three megawatts of interconnection rights. With Pacific Core, it's important to know that interconnections and your commercial contracts are not the same. You can go out and secure as much interconnection rights as you want, um, and still only sign a contract for a fraction of that. Essentially what we did is we secured a certain amount thinking we could potentially get a contract for up to sixty-three megawatts. We only received contracts for fifty megawatts, and so because that's all we got a contract for, we released the remaining thirteen megawatts. In terms of, um. Other comments. The, the question again about the electrons being sold to P G E. Electrons do enter the grid and are used where they need to, the contract with P G E and the way that. It means like power markets work is you sign a contract and they basically pay you to put something on the grid, but once you leave the grid. There's no telling exactly where the electrons go. There's no, there is no way, there is no way to move electrons specifically from Lakeview to Portland. Unless you build a line specifically from our project to Portland, uh, once it's on the grid. The electrons go wherever, adding the additional load in Lake County will. The more, um, the more generation you have in an area, the more security you have in that area. So electrons will be going to Lake County and it will actually help strengthen the grid in this area. Because there is additional loads to service, their request in this area. So that's the piece on E D E. And then, uh, just to the final point on, on some of the grading areas. The, we've had our team, our team's engineers, um, Jacob's team's engineers and the E P C contractor that we have worked with. Have all said that that land, um, that Mr. Tom, you know, talked about is, it's fine for citing solar. And it's not, you know, so steep that, that we would have to terrace that land. So, uh, just addressing that point that it would not absolutely have, which would be graded in order to get solar. That's all I've got from that.
So a point of clarification then, um, of this problem. And based on everything today in the Maya, there is no intention to grade?
I'm not, I, the, the intent was never to say that there would be no grading, but we will not be grading the entire city. There will be minimal grading required in certain areas for things like inverters, um, and roads. But we can't, like, where panels are going in, panels can be on underlying land. We want to grade as little as possible because grading is expensive. So we're actually incentivized to not grade as much as possible, but where we have to, we will.
No further rebuttal then from the gentleman? Yeah, okay. All right, um, with that. Are there any additional comments, um, from, uh, Mr. Darwin, legal counsel? Jim Bailey, I, I'm, I'm assuming you're still on the line. I can't see the screen. So before, before I conclude today's meeting, I, I want to make sure that we're set on a date for the next meeting at time. And also, uh, at what point, uh, we will close the record for additional public comment. I, I personally was looking at the close of the second meeting, um, two weeks from today. It's October twentieth. And if it's agreeable to the commissioners, um, my fellow commissioners, one o'clock in the afternoon, uh, two weeks from today.
James, can I just add, I had a lot of people contacting me that they were interested in attending, but they could not come because it is a middle of the workday. This is obviously a contentious issue. I think it would be a disservice to our county citizens to not have it at.
Thank you. Obviously, uh, this is something that we've talked about before, one of the impacts of this, you know, doing those evening meetings. As Darwin and I were talking earlier, um, the meeting that we had on sitting solar until nine, ten o'clock and I'm. Um, and I don't believe I went to going until the next day. But, uh. Those scheduling evening meetings after five o'clock are also hardship on plates. And that's just a. So.
I propose, uh, either a four P M. or a five P M. start.
Okay. Or even better, five, four P M.
Maybe one hour, people get off one hour early. And, uh, still allows people to be here that, that can't get here till five. Four P M.
Yep.
What date was that?
October twentieth. Process check Darwin, the next meeting, uh, what is gonna happen at the next meeting?
So. You should have an open hearing like this and make sure that everyone that wants to be heard is heard. I would be specific, if you want written comments by the twentieth at four o'clock or whenever, at the start of that meeting, or maybe an hour before or so that I can at least even get your copies of them. However, it, it won't really matter if you got comments, um, to review before the meeting starts, we can, you'll certainly have some more time to deliver it after that. So if you wanted to close at the, that day, you know, it doesn't really matter when, but you do need to set a time specifically when all written comments are due by as well.
Okay.
And then, and then at that point, yeah, you hold it very similar to what you held today. Just allow, um, all, you know, the applicant to go first and any, um, opposition or neutral and then. Or support, honestly, and then, and then rebuttal finally by the applicant. At the close of that meeting, if there's new information that's submitted, um, the applicant will certainly ask and request time to respond to that in writing. Uh, and I would suggest that, you know, give them whatever time they feel necessary with the flying commission we gave them. Came back after that.
But so, well, I guess I'm thinking. I, I was feeling like maybe at the close of that meeting, no, no additional comment written or oral would be taken in.
Right.
At the close of that meeting, and the reason I would leave, uh, written testimony open up to that point. Is because sometimes we have written testimonies submitted to us that day. And, uh, you know, like today, we did have some written testimony that was given to us.
So you can pick whatever you want. It's just that the applicant obviously has to rebut anything that's submitted, so you just have to give them the last chance to rebut that, and they usually need a day or two.
Right.
Or more, depending on how much you submitted.
So what we would do is, okay, let's, let's do this, uh. At the close of the meeting on the twentieth of October. Uh, we will, we will close any additional public comment, um, coming into the record. And we will allow the applicants, uh, those two days weekend. Allow for one week or the close of business on the, that, on the Friday of the following week. That would be October twenty-third. Submit any written rebuttal.
Does the applicant feel that that's appropriate timer? Do you want more or less, what do you, what do you?
Yeah, thank you. So that's. So that's, and, uh, and then at that point, then we will likely have another meeting and we can determine that date at another time. It will most likely be in early November. Potentially on our first meeting in November on, is it the second or the third or, no, we have.
We're in pitching style.
That's correct, yes. So even if we end up having to do a special session, it could be that. But it will be sometime early November to which we will be making our final decision.
Yeah, something given on the twenty ninth, that, that won't give us enough time to have a meeting on the second. You know, to respond to that.
Correct. Yeah, we're receiving.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we're doing a combined session.
Well, sometime after. And you guys can decide that on the twentieth. At your next meeting, you can decide that at a final meeting on the next.
Okay. All right. That, uh, sufficient, good to go? All right.
So four o'clock specifically on the twentieth, we'll meet in this room again.
Correct. And the, the record, the manual?
Yeah, the record, so spinning comments you have still to meet, I'll get them to board.
All right, um, with that, I will, uh, close the hearing at, uh, five fifty.
Four fifty.
Sorry, four fifty, excuse me.